For the Vasquez Boulevard update, will Brent Soderland, city engineer, please introduce the presentation?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. Tonight we'll be presenting an update to the Vasquez Boulevard project. As you may recall, CDOT provided an update to the Vasquez project at the June 8th study session. And as a result of that meeting, CDOT Commerce City Leadership conducted a field visit to the intersection of Vasquez and 60th to discuss possible long-term solutions for the intersection. Design charrette was then held in August to discuss potential long-term solutions to address the congestion at 60th and Vasquez. Tonight, CDOT will be presenting alternatives that were discussed, the design charrette, and soliciting feedback. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Director Lou and Ryan Sorensen with CDOT. And Director Lou will be introducing her staff and then kicking off the presentation.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, sorry for the moment of technical difficulty. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having our team back again this evening. I believe that we will have a chance, over the course of the session, to talk both about the Vasquez project, but then also to provide an update on the 270 project later on in the evening. It's important to us to have the opportunity to talk with you about both of these two projects together, because something that we really heard early on from all of you in these conversations was that, you know, having this be one discussion where we look at these two projects together and look at them in terms of the way they both affect all of you together needs to be an important part of our project planning for this corridor. So that's exactly, you know, what we'd like to talk to you about in discussing these projects is not just the projects themselves, but how they connect, how the different scenarios on Vasquez connect into 270, and to really talk through what we've changed because of the conversations we've had together and how we sort of see the pros and the cons of the different projects panning out. So I will turn it over in a moment to my, no problem. I'll turn it over in a moment to my team to kind of walk you through what came out of the charrette. You know, you'll see that we have some proposals for how to adjust the plan. It doesn't necessarily, it's not, you know, there are challenges with all of the options and we'd like to have an open conversation with you about the pros and the cons. So we look forward to be candid feedback. You know, nothing we're presenting to you tonight is sort of done and done. So, you know, we really want everybody's honest opinion about the scenarios we've come up with and are looking forward to hearing the feedback. So with that, I think I will turn it over to Adam and others to walk through.
Excellent. Yes, I was gonna have Velvet Kiesel run the slides. Is there, is she on, perchance? Or is, because I don't, I don't see Andy, Andy Stratton or Velvet.
Yeah, so I can promote Velvet. Who else? I'm sorry?
Well, we have Velvet Kiesel, Leah Langerman, Stacy Shore, and Andrew Stratton. And I think...
Do we have the 270 team too?
Yeah, I don't see them.
I'm sorry, Ryan, I meant to turn it over to you. But if we, if the 270 folks are here, I think it would be great if we could promote them too so that they can comment when we talk about the way the two projects interconnect.
Yeah, I know Adam Parks and team would be here. Perhaps we could bring Andy, or Adam?
Adam, yeah.
In, and then get Adam, get your input on that.
Yep, I've moved Adam over now.
Yes, good evening. This is Adam.
Hey, Adam, is there anybody else I should be looking forward to move over to a panelist right now?
Jessica Micklebust. And also Nick Farber.
Sure, I'll get them over.
And I'll be presenting later on, so I'll take, I guess I'll share screen at a later point.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate you having, taking the time to have us back to take another look at the, this important area, Vasquez and the 60th area north of the Vasquez-270 interchange. So what, if we could, so basically some background of how we got here is we were looking at, CDOT was working with Commerce City in Adams County to look at possible solutions for this, the intersection at 60th and Vasquez, and then that area that stretched up to the 64th area, and how to best, basically, look at improvements for the area. What we were looking at at the time was, we were looking at access issues, how to best move pedestrians and bicyclists through the area as well as traffic. And I said, as, as I said, access, but access on those west frontage roads is something we were really looking at closely in how that would impact the operations of not only vehicle movements, but pedestrian movements through the area. And then access to Parkway was a major, a major consideration as well. I will, at that time, we were looking at some improvements, what we're calling a modified traditional intersection at that time. And we were looking in the range of 20 to 25 million order of magnitude dollars for the solution we were sort of looking at previously. I'd like to point out a couple things related to graphics and graphics in general that will be a common theme throughout the slides we will, will be showing you is that we have the purple lines, the light purple lines are meant to represent pedestrian movements through the area, through the intersection. And then the dark purple lines, in this case, the dashed lines would be a great separated pedestrian facility, which we heard interest from you in previously. At this time, when we presented in June, as Brent had said, you know, there was some thoughts by, by, by the council members and Mr. Mayor, that perhaps we should take a step back and just kind of take another look, how can we best make sure we're meeting your needs? Are we, make sure we're hitting the mark with this project? And then, you know, that it's, it's working well with the 270 project and how, how those are, make sure that those two are coordinated well. So at that time, since we heard that feedback, hey, should we take another look at this just to make sure we're, we're really getting, hitting the mark with this? We, again, as Brent said, we held what we call a design charrette. So if you could go to the next slide, that'd be helpful. And one thing I'll note too is, I said that order of magnitude due to that previous one is 20 to 25 million. If we could just keep in mind that what we have currently in hand is 12 million. So it's just in order, that's what we're working off of for design and then would contribute to the project for right-of-way and construction in the future. That's what we're working off currently. So as you see these upcoming slides, at least that gives you sort of a gauge of where we're at, where we would need to be in order to move forward. So with that, we held a design charrette. And what a design charrette is, is basically it's a brainstorming meeting in which we, we get together in the same room and we just throw ideas out there and say, here's what I think would really be best for this area. And, and then it has, we, it has kind of a technical bent to it somewhat. So we had drawings to help facilitate that, help facilitate that. And then also, we had a really healthy discussion. So from that, you had given us what you would like to see brought forward and what you would like to see us to explore further. You could see the, on the lower left of that slide there, you can see some of the options that you had expressed interest in, that we should take forward and at least in, in, take a look at, furthering those. The, we, we looked at a single roundabout. In this, for those of you who are able to attend the charrette, it would be familiar, single roundabout, double roundabout type of configuration, a diamond, which is somewhat of a tight diamond, and then a CFI or continuous flow intersection. And we have a short video to show you of a CFI, to at least get an idea of what it is. I mean, it's easy for us to throw the term out there, but we have a short video that can kind of give you a feel for it, how, how one of those generally work. And I just want to point out, a big goal today is to really show you what we've come up with and then get your feedback and look for your guidance and feedback on the next steps and how we move forward with this project. And I'd like to say that what we came up with here is, keep in mind, we have the high level, you'll be able to see fairly quickly, high-level impacts, risks, and over order of magnitude costs associated with some of these options that we're looking at. And I also want to point out too, that we worked with DEA and Commerce City staff. So we weren't, we worked with Roger, Joe, Brent, and others to, to help facilitate developing what you will see here. So I will walk us through the options that we're looking at. Right, Velvet, if you could go to the next one, that'd be great. Okay, so a couple important notes, like I said before, keep in mind the light purple signifies pedestrian movements. The, the red axes signify property takes, okay? So keep in mind that what we're displaying here is the order of magnitude impacts and risks so that we can, we could have that as a point of conversation with you. Some advantages of having this type of option, well, basically what we looked at here, let me back up a little bit, what we looked at here is it's single roundabout that's somewhat elevated or close to at grade of the 60th area. So the roundabout itself, you can see there, that's actually at the grade of 60th or close to that. And then Vasquez would be actually down, lowered. So Vasquez would go under 60th in this case. Some advantages of grade separating the two, in that particular case, would be, you know, pedestrian movements would be separated and taken away from Vasquez, which is a big advantage, they could move east-west across there with, with not a lot of impact, or, you know, not having to actually cross Vasquez. And then also that helps you with maintain a visual corridor through the area east-west as opposed to, let's say, an elevated type of grade structure, which can give you that feel of separation between east and west. Bicycles as well have that same advantage as pedestrians. And then a big advantage here too is the, we're connecting with all of the, the frontage roads or the connecting roads. We're connecting to Parkway and we're connecting to east-west frontage roads, both in the north and the south there, as you can see. As you can see as well with this, this particular option, this is, there's some challenges as well. We could see the, the property impacts related to that. There would also be some considerations in this particular case of lowering Vasquez. There's a potential for high groundwater, given Sand Creek to the south. And then if, if you're aware, there's a pump house to, to keep water away from the area of a grade-separated railroad structure to the north. So we kind of, we would have to look at something as well at high groundwater, basically, we would be getting into. And then with that sort of contaminants, environmental issues. And then utilities in the area, we'd also have to consider there's a decent amount of utilities within that intersection that we would need to compensate for. The order of magnitude costs, in this case, we're looking at 60 to 70 million. You could see that, just by gauging at least a visual, that you would have to consider that there's some variability and risk involved in that due to, you would have to have multiple structures, multiple walls, retaining walls through the area to compensate for that lowering of Vasquez. So this at least, we, we talked about a single roundabout and we, and we wanted to at least give you that visual. I think it, it really becomes apparent. So Velvet, if we could walk to the next one. And then, I'm not sure if I mentioned this earlier, but after we go through the last one, then, then we'll get into the, we'll get into feedback on these. And I'll also notice, note as well that Velvet has closer graphics for us to zoom up on if, if, if we want to. I think that will be, help us to, to do that when we get into feedback. Okay, so this is a dual roundabout configuration. We had heard an interest really in a configuration of a dual roundabout. I know there's other areas around Colorado and in the metro area that have something similar. So we wanted to explore that further. And this is, again, all of these is, these are the items that we heard from you at the charrette and your interest in, in looking at these. So you could see that this has very similar impacts, trade-offs, advantages as the single roundabout. You're taking the pedestrians away from Vasquez, grade separating them for a little bit better ease of movement. In this case, I mentioned that the single roundabout was at approximately the grade of the current 60th area. This, that would be the case here as well. Of course, that will be dependent on further and refined designs. The, some trade-offs are similar as well, taking Vasquez down, the property impacts, groundwater, utilities, possible environmental mitigation considerations, and a similar cost impact or order of magnitude cost of 60 to 70 million dollars. And the one thing I didn't mention earlier that I meant to, at least in the early, when we began, is just that with these options and getting your feedback of how to move forward and what to move forward with, we would have to, in any of these cases, do a comparison of operations. So once we get into the next phase, we'd be able to take your recommendations and, and run operations, operations analysis on those. We would have to sharpen our pencils on accesses for businesses, what access does work in, through coordination with you and through CDOT access and others, our traffic group, and to, to make those refined decisions. But at this point, we're at the order of magnitude impacts, costs, and risks in order to figure out how, what to move forward with. And then we, at that time, we would also be seeing how we tie a little bit more refined of how we would run, or we would tie in with 270, how the operations would look between the two, and how the geometrics in the configuration between Vasquez and 270 would look. And that would further help, that would help us to get to a further decision point once we would have that information. Okay, Velvet, if you could go to the next one. Alright, so the third item we heard from you of interest is a diamond configuration. And the diamond configuration is, you could see here, grades, it's grade separated. Vasquez again is lowered to below the 60th area. Advantages, similar, you can keep, you could separate pedestrians from, from Vasquez. There is some access challenges, we see here on the right-hand side, near the McDonald's and other businesses where the Walmarts, the signals at the Walmart, we'd be looking to tie in there. And then that, we'd have to sharpen our pencils again of how we get the access to Parkway. Drive, so that, that is a challenge with this particular, this configuration. And then challenges too, it's, it's still a pretty tight area. And you could, we would, you could see that we even in preliminary layouts, did our best to fit everything in. There would be walls, retaining walls and so forth, to be able to tie everything together and get it to, get the grades to work. Similar impacts to groundwater, utilities, and so forth. Estimated cost preliminary is a little bit lower. I could see there being a lot less variability in the right-of-way impacts and costs and risks related to that. As you could see, the, some of the other configurations were wider. And, you know, you're a lot, lot less subject to market conditions, but there's still a lot to, to consider here. Alright, if we could go to the next one. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, another option that we looked at in order to help look at this another way, and we talked about in the charrette, is it, what is a CFI or continuous flow intersection? And we've prepared, we've utilized a video, we didn't make the video, but we've, we're utilizing a video to help show you what those impacts or what this generally looks like. And then we can, we can show you what some, a configuration might look like in this area at 60th and Vasquez. So Velvet, if you could try to launch that, let's see if, hopefully, we can get that to work well.
A continuous flow intersection, sometimes referred to as a displaced left-turn intersection, is an innovative design to improve intersection safety and mobility by redirecting some or all left turns at a major signalized intersection. This improves efficiency by allowing all left turns and through movements on one or multiple approaches to occur at the same time. To navigate a continuous flow intersection, vehicles on the main street or side street are allowed to drive through the intersection, the same as any conventional intersection. Main street left-turning traffic will cross opposing through lanes in advance of the main intersection, and the traffic signal can be timed on the through movements, and displaced left turns can continuously flow or occur simultaneously since left-turning traffic will be on the outside of the through movements. This allows for moving moored main street traffic through the intersection, helping alleviate congestion. Signs, pavement markings, and the intersection layout are designed to assist motorists safely through the intersection. Right-turn movements from side streets occur on the outside of the displaced main street left-turning traffic. Bicycles and pedestrians navigate continuous flow intersections by using pedestrian signals and pavement markings across the main intersection. Continuous flow intersections have been installed in many locations across the United States and have been proven to help improve safety and operations of congested signalized intersections.
Excellent, thank you. And we, so you could see there, there, some advantages of a CFI are reduced delays, enhanced safety by having fewer conflict points between traffic, and then it's a lower-cost option and risk option than any grade-separated configuration. So we could see, and you could see here, some of those, that leads to some of the general, general pros and cons of the intersection, basically. Again, I'd like to point out that the light purple represents pedestrian movements. A, the dashed lines represent the general area of a pedestrian grade-separated structure. We're more in the range of 40 to 50 million dollars due to keeping everything, primarily everything at grade, and then also try, looking to minimize property impacts in this particular case. So, let's see. Alright, we would, again, we would, in, in this particular case, we would have to sharpen our pencils on the access, how each access would look for businesses to make sure that the, the operations work well. And one thing I know, what I, what I would note also is, a challenge would be if we have signals at 270. So you could have a lot of signalization from 62nd, which is still, we're still looking at 60, signal at 62nd. As you could imagine, as you travel northbound from 270 Uh as you, you could imagine, as you travel northbound from two seventy. Uh area, you have a signaled down there and then perhaps a signal uh that you reach. Not too far after that, and then a signal, a signal, and then not, signal, signal at sixtieth, and then signal at sixty second. So it would just, we, again, we'd have to look at it closely operationally and comparing it. Uh and then any refined access considerations, refining those. Uh and then comparing it and looking at it in comparison to the other uh two other options. Okay, so if we could go to the next slide. So again, just to go back to the goal of the first slide, it was, is to bring the items forward from the charrette. Which we've worked with your team uh to to help optimize those. Get your feedback and thoughts on it. Uh and you've seen at least a order of magnitude property impacts. Uh considerations for bicycle and pedestrian movements, and we need to think and consider sixty second avenue access uh further. Uh and then, like I said, we'd be looking further at traffic operations modeling. Uh timing of implementation, coordination between the two seventy and and uh the Vasquez project. And how that would look and uh we're also considering throughout. These projects uh is the regional connectivity for pedestrians through this area. Uh down to Sand Creek and in other areas to match with the with the overall vision for. For the the pedestrian and trail plans. And then, as as I said, we have twelve mil, we're we're currently working off in 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 preliminary design of twelve million in hand. That twelve million came from the uh Dr. Cog Regional. Uh subregional tip application put forward by Commerce City. So with that. Before, before we open it up to conversation, is there anyone from the C dot or? Commerce City uh staff? Engineering staff or that you would like to mention as a part of this before we kind of get into a a discussion? Okay. I think a a good. Um Joe, if you could help uh facilitate or give as we go and give thoughts on each of them. It might help velvet if we could start by bringing up the single roundabout. And then just open it up for general, if a little bit, zoom in a little bit closer so we can see this. And then get our thought and start to get thoughts from people. The initial, initial reactions. Thoughts on costs, risks, long term, uh development versus short term and so forth. Alan, perhaps it would help, oh, Mr. Mayor.
I was gonna ask if anyone on council has any questions for staff or C dot regarding this slide. Council member Noble.
Yes, thank you very much. When uh you factored the costs. Did you take into account the businesses that would be condemned? I think I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight businesses that would be condemned, is that included in the sixty million? I wouldn't think so.
Well, again, we, we did consider it preliminarily, it would need to be looked at. First, we got, we had gotten costs from our right of way group as preliminary level of cost, but I think. I think there is a lot of risk there uh to your point. Uh and we would have to sharpen that, our pencils further uh to consider that, given market conditions, and then it is, it is very impactful.
It is, you know. The uh the traffic circles would be wonderful. For this intersection, no question about it, both of these, I've, I've experienced this single one, I have done the double up near. Further up north. And then uh the third one, of course, they have a CFI, CFI, CYF or whatever it's called. In Superior, which in my opinion, I take my life into my hands when I try to make that cross, but. You know, traffic people like them. Um, my concern about these two, both of these, both of the traffic circles. Are that there's all these businesses here that would have to be taken out if we do it, and unfortunately. Planning didn't occur in advance, that took into account the future or the possibility that. We could use this as a central point in Commerce City, and I just don't see how these work and um how they're even on the table.
Thank you, council member.
So I guess I would ask city council and the mayor of. Is this an option that we want to move forward with, especially considering the amount of um property impacts that it has? And just looking at it, you know, it has a lot of um difficulty, I think, for pedestrian movements. I'm just curious if anybody has any uh I guess feedback on that. Council member Madera.
Yeah, you know, kind of just gonna echo. Councilwoman Noble's sentiment on this, uh you know. It'd be really hard sell for either one of these uh loops, just. Because uh we have to live here, right, and if we're over here destroying the Starbucks that we waited. You know, twenty something odd years to get in the the core city, then uh. Yeah, I don't think um that would just. That would work for us politically, if you ever wanna run again, but. I mean, a lot of these buildings are brand new, that Wendy's is brand new. The Starbucks is just been remodeled, so. The impact from this, I I think would cost uh far more than what's estimated. And it would be drawn out and in court most likely, so. I I kind of think that both the loops are gonna be off the table just because of that. And um, you know. Ms. Noble uh alluded to that a continuous uh. Flow intersection that they have in Superior, and those are just, they're so confusing and. There's a lot of going on in this intersection already that I think that would just add to that confusion. And you know, you mentioned about the lights at the intersections. Well, part of the problem with this intersection is there's a lot of, you know, tractor trailers that go through this um. You know, corridor here, and there's a lot of lights, so it takes them a long time to get going when they have a load. And so those light cycles. Can't really control the flow of traffic because they're not taking into the in the account the massive amount of big trucks that are going through these. So traffic gets backed up and uh, you know, if you add more lights, it's just gonna compound that. That problem, and you're gonna be backed up all the way up to eightieth. So. I think for that reason, option four is probably um gonna be a challenge. And so it kind of just leaves the the diamond as. You know, the the least worst option out of all of these, I think, you know, has uh the pedestrian access, I think there's still some challenges with. The business access that we're gonna have here, but at least you're not. Having to. Purchase all this right away and and get rid of businesses, and you know, a big problem in the core city is. You know, access to food and most of the food that's in the the core city is centralized right here in this area, so if you start. Getting rid of that, that's only gonna make that problem, you know, that much worse.
Yeah, thank you, council member, that's very, that's very valuable information.
Council member Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, I'm. I'm along the same lines as um Councilwoman Noble and um Councilman Madera, my biggest concern is, like I said, the impact that it would have. On our businesses in Commerce City, um you know, and we're trying to get more businesses to come to Commerce City and. Just would like to see, you know, possibility exploring more, like improving possibly the traffic signals that are. Currently there, and then we had mentioned possibly like a pedestrian walkway across something like that, um. You know, more concerned about the residents instead of pushing um businesses out of that area. Thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I echo the same thing, I think the diamond uh option is the best one that I see. Um but we also have some issues with that. Option one, two, and the CFI just wouldn't work here, especially one and two, those roundabouts, a lot of those businesses. Like they said, are brand new, so a diamond option and and kind of go with that, thank you.
Council member Hurst.
Yep, not much to add to that, I um agree that the first two, at the very least, um are gonna have to be no go, it's just because of the property.
Council member Grimes.
Uh I would echo those same comments, I absolutely love roundabouts, but I can see how it's just not practical in this. Situation, um given the property that would, we would lose there, um but I am, I'm really encouraged by a great separation option in the the V. In the V scenario, so yeah, I I agree that's the best of the options.
Council member Smith.
Just to kind of piggyback off what everybody else has said, I don't really like the roundabouts either. Think if we got rid of the new Starbucks that we just waited so long for, it would cause a lot of chaos. Thanks.
Council member Noble.
Thanks for letting me come back again, um. There was discussion, as council member Alan Thomas uh pointed out about a pedestrian bridge previously. Uh so the people can get back and forth in bicycles, too, for that matter. But could we take even like, say, twenty steps back? And remind everyone why we're doing this? The amount of uh traffic that's currently coming da- up and down Vasquez in a day? What you're anticipating because of two seventy being closed? Why this has to be done?
Well, a little bit of history, and I'll have others chime in. In support of that. Uh a history on this is, we we generally did a much larger study of of Vasquez, including the interchange at two seventy, so we were looking. Uh approximately down at fifty sixth, a- all the way up through no- up north. Uh through where we split off to go up to highway two. In that for a larger improvement to the area and how that would tie into two seventy to best move traffic. Um through the area and increase safety, uh I think see, so there's, there's several. Uh things that you would want to improve as a part of this, uh operations to get uh traffic through. As you alluded to, that there's a lot of cars going north south through this area, uh while at the same time improving. Uh safety through the area for pedestrians, uh while at the same time reducing crashes and so forth. And so I think there's a desire, it, there's a dire desire generally to improve this intersection, which is always. Uh for some time been somewhat of a point of of uh. Of desired improvement to this particular intersection. Uh in sort, how we had gotten to this point, and some of the options that were looked at in that previous study that was done. Uh had finished wrapped up a couple of years ago, some of those options were of of much larger scale. On the orders of magnitude of a hundred. Somewhere in the range of hundred to two hundred million dollars, and then they did, were much more impactful with their tie-ins to two seventy, depending on which one you look, we're looking at. Uh so the the whole stem or the the, where this all came from was, how do we make improvements to the area? A little bit quicker, knowing that we don't have the full funding. In order to meet the longer term vision, uh while at the same time helping to improve the the safety and operations of this area. Um and and that was the the reason why these, this, this project had come up and was moving forward, finding. Finding a project that could be mobilized a lot quicker, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright, I know, rep to you, um I guess I'm looking for the numbers, what we're talking about here. You know, you say accidents, how many accidents, how many pedestrian accidents, how many vehicles up and down, what more you're anticipating? If you're doing a lower grade strictly for trucks, why are you do, why, you know, what what's involved here, and I'm sort of missing all of that.
Yeah, I would, I would have to ask Stacy, could you chime in on that a little bit related to traffic numbers? I don't have specific numbers in front of me.
Um, what's the question exactly?
Well, I mean, at least I know. Council member, if you would like.
I'm asking about uh circulation issues, how many, what, what, in a normal day, how many trucks and cars go up and down? Vasquez, what we're dealing with here, what you're anticipating will go up and down this road. When you close off two seventy, because I think in reality, it's two seventies closure. For the um widening that is leading to this. If there are accidents that are involved, what's the data on the accidents? What are the most dangerous corners? Um you know, all that kind of information that goes into helping make an informed decision.
So council member Noble, I just would step in here for a little bit, so I don't think there's any plans to actually close I two seventy. The purpose of the sixtieth avenue improvements here is to complement the I seventy project that, where there'll be adding lanes.
Was it, however. For uh the widening that will go on, won't there be a detour to Vasquez?
I don't know if they've gotten to that piece yet, if they'll detour around I two seventy, I don't know if C dot has gotten into those details, but. The whole, the whole purpose of this project is to um do improvements as the sixtieth and Vasquez so that. The entire interchange with two seventy will function better in the future. If that, if that makes sense, so we want to be able to move traffic more efficiently on Vasquez so that. The interchange can be fully uh totally utilized.
Yes. And perhaps. Now, I'm not trying to put Stacy on the spot, I don't, I don't have those numbers, perhaps the, it would be good for us to put. Put something together to show, to be able to deliver to, to help, to help. To help see that. More of the quantifiable. Information as to what accidents occur where in the volumes to the area. I just don't have that right on hand.
Yes, so we did do that announce. Um for the existing conditions, so I don't have them in front of me right now, and we can definitely pull all that together. We had pulled it together when we were looking at the um at grade intersection type of improvements. To show the differences and the types, it's, they're really about, the accidents are related to congestion. And backups and queues as well as conflicts, because you have so many different approaches to the intersection. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but that's what we found are the trends at the intersection themselves. So they are during, you know, peak hours when there's congestion at this intersection and the queues back up. Um particularly on Vasquez, but also on sixtieth and Parkway, and then um. Turning traffic, however, the turning um crashes weren't as high as one might expect. Um people, you know, kind of make their way through this intersection, I think it's almost confusing enough that people are. Kind of are like, whoa, I need to really pay attention, right, um versus some other intersections. Um but they're really related to that type of thing, it's not run off the road or or things like that, it's really related to the. The congestion and complexity of the intersection itself, as far as the crashes. Um as far as volumes, we have all those, and I'm trying to find them. Um, as far as volumes, we have all those and I'm trying to find them. But we um also did analysis of the current intersection and it fails during both the AM and uh PM peak hours. Um, the queues back up, um, you know, in the quarter mile range um over a thousand feet southbound and in the morning, oh, you know, almost two thousand feet back up to the U State Highway Two um ramp there. So anything that can help move traffic through the intersection is is going to help with congestion um during peak hours here.
Does you have a question, councilmember Noble?
Uh, I'll go with it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I'll chime in on um kind of my dual half perspective. So the I actually am a a fan of roundabouts, but we just don't have the space in this situation. Uh, uh, let me say, let me say, let me restate that. I'm a fan of roundabouts and we have the space. Basically, you have to have the lane width available for trucks. What I can tell you is that just five operations that I know of just um in this general vicinity would equate to over three hundred and fifty trucks a day. And uh over forty um longer vehicle combination trips a day. And so, you know, those create their own set of challenges, um some pretty significant operations in the area where I wouldn't be um surprised if the numbers were five to six hundred local trucks a day, plus all the pass-through trucks that are going to all the fuel racks and everything else in this location. So um it's quite a significant freight route um on this. And so, you know, con- considering that I really like the, you know, great separations there, but they do kind of um choke all of the truck traffic onto one road, which right now they're kind of it's kind of sharing between um fifty-six, fifty-eight, Sixtieth, you know, depending on where where you start and finish at. And so that'd be my only concern. It's just the amount of traffic that we have there, and I haven't heard of anybody's plans to to, you know, move or change locations. And so for the foreseeable future, we expect to have that amount of traffic, if not more in the area. And so that that's really the concern of mine is just making sure that whatever design that we pick considers the I would say this has to be in the top three locations in the state in terms of longer vehicle combination trip origin and destinations. And so it it's something to consider as well.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I had a question. Um, so I was kind of looking at this in a little bit of a vacuum based off of the current configuration, but you know, my my question in looking ahead, you know, we're gonna be talking about a two seventy project here coming up. Which of these configurations would work best with that and how would that tie in?
We would, well, uh, and Stacy, I don't know if you can think about this a little bit further. We would still, from this point, the the primary intent of what that we came back with is we we heard from you at the at the charrette, what you what options in what configurations you'd like to look us to look at further. And so we we've we've taken those and we've laid them out and so that you could see what the impacts are and get the get your feedback on those. And then as a next step, with what with with the options that we move forward for further analysis, we would need to look at that the best, uh, look at that further, basically. How does this in the intersection, which intersection of the options that we move forward for further further analysis best tie in with two seventy? I'm not, I would say I don't know if we have that answer really right now, as it would take further uh development um and coordination between two seventy, which we intend to do. It's just at this point, we need to know, uh, uh, you know, which ones are on the table and which ones are off the table to further refine in design and then be able to judge that. Is there anyone from our team who would like to chime in on that?
So there Stacy, so there are, I'll let Adam go, but there are definitely different options as far as how close they get to two seventy. So physically, the grade separations, you know, will have impacts closer to the two seventy interchange because of the grades and changes in grades. And then the CFI also will have the left turn intersection, new signal that is closer to two seventy. So um we do know that there are options that are, you know, have have changes that are closer to the interchange, which could be um impactful to that. But as we do need to look at as far as the traffic operations along the whole corridor from through the two seventy interchange all the way up through sixty second. But go ahead, Adam.
Sure. Thanks, Stacy. Um, so this is Adam Parks with the two seventy project, and fortunately, it looks like the work we're doing on two seventy would pair up nicely around fifty-eighth place as it showed on the screen there. So we don't have a lot of overlap physically. We definitely have to consider the operational. You know, how that how do things tie in like Stacy was saying, uh, but the physical work is going to be south of this area primarily, so.
In any case, we would have to work to optimize. You would, as as a an option is selected, you'd work to optimize that that option uh between the two projects. I hope that helps, uh, councilmember.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it does, just to know how these all work together.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I apologize. I'll take my hand down. It was still up to my hand.
Any other questions, comments from council for staff or C dot regarding this discussion? Seeing none, uh, councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I realize you're looking to counsel for direction on this. I just am curious from from your perspective as professionals and in traffic. What what option would you choose if you could pick one?
The I guess the the best way to in in my opinion, option one and two, I'll say obviously one and two, don't see, don't see, they don't seem feasible. Uh, we got, there was a similar reaction to your from your staff as you had to one and two, or I should say, I I I'll take that back, the roundabouts. So the the big roundabout in the the two. At one and ti- at one time, they were sort of the one and two option, but um and then, so my reaction to it is that the roundabouts are impactful and impractical. The CFI, in in my opinion, I think uh once one of the council members mentioned this, is that it's confusing. Um, and there is a risk as well, because if let the the pedestrian separation is it, you can add that on uh in we estimate about six million dollars, uh, but perhaps it would be more based on property impacts. You could add that on, but pedestrians would have at grade would have to make a lot of movement. So they basically have to make a small crossing, stop and wait on an island, make a small crossing, stop and wait on an island, make another small crossing, stop and wait on an island. And when it comes down to traffic and operations, I'm not sure, I I have a, I I'm not sure if that's the best choice. So however, it could, it can function, but would have to be just, we would have to look at it a lot. It would have to look at it closer. It may be the, it may be the best choice. Then the the it seems like uh the tight diamond or the diamond configuration would be a a desirable option to move forward with for exploration uh further. So this one and what we're calling the modified, uh, the modified at-grade uh or modified traditional intersection, uh, I think are prime candidates for looking at further and then uh looking how they function and come up with the more specific details in order to to then decide from there uh what looks best. So it's kind of talking around the answer somewhat, but um, yeah, go ahead, Brent.
So I do have a question for you. So it looks like what you're calling the modified traditional intersection and the diamond intersection actually kind of complement each other. So because it looks like we need these connector roads on the west side of the intersection to make both of them work. So if we were to do the connector roads with the the modified traditional intersection, it wouldn't preclude us from moving forward with with the diamond intersection. Is that is that right? That's what I'm kind of getting from looking at the the slides here.
I would say so. I'd have to my team back me up or chime in on that a little bit, but uh I would, I would say so. It has similar secondary roadway network implications. Councilmember Grimes, does that uh, does that help um the conversation?
It does. I I mean, it basically supports what we've talked our way to um largely tonight. So, yeah, I was just curious from your professional opinion, what you would choose if you were making making a pick. So thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I'm not, I just wanted to uh have some final comments before we move on to two seventy. Um. So I think, you know, we're all looking for the most improvement that we would expect out of something, because, you know, as kind of was mentioned earlier, it's a very awkward intersection, but it for what it is, it it kind of works. And so how could we, you know, improve it without um taking away too much, I guess, would be the final goal for me. But with any of these options, is there any changes um where highway two merges with Vasquez? Um, and are there any changes needed at sixty-second and sixty-fourth for these to to function appropriately? Or um, because I know in our in our preliminary discussions, there was focuses north of this location as well.
Yes, uh, for um the sixty-second, okay, so for for this particular option, uh, a signal at sixty-second uh would be required to help provide well, we could, as we could see here, help provide uh access to the area to supplement the access that would be required due to the the configuration changes at sixty-sixtieth in this particular case. Now, for a tight, for the diamond configuration, that would be it, it wouldn't be required, or at least that's what we are seeing preliminarily. With with that configuration, uh, Stacy, do you want to chime in on that?
Sure. Sure. So with the um velvet, if you go back to the first one, so with the at-grade um because we are modifying an access from Parkway um onto southbound, uh, we're prohibiting the left from Parkway onto southbound Vasquez. Um, that it uh there would need to be a traffic signal at sixty seconds. So that would be part of this option is to have a traffic signal at sixty second to provide those movements as well as other movements on and off of Vasquez for traffic to the east. So that's why it isn't, is it is what Ryan talked about as required as part. So you would get the all of that circulation with this. Um, with the tight diamond, um, all of the movements um on and off of Parkway are provided that can occur at the interchange at Sixtieth. Um, so because of that, the signal at sixty-second is not required as part of the project. Um, and because it's a grade separated, you can see that right there that the um on-ramp from State Highway Two southbound that um we have to look at grades and things like that and weaving, um, because you can see the off-ramp is really close right there to the south of that, the off-ramp right there that we would need to look further at weaving. And because of that, a signal at sixty-second could also um would need to be analyzed further to see if it's even um possible, or if it would help or make things worse with that ramp. So um that would have to be looked at if it's even something that, see, that would want to do to have a signal there. So with, that's how they differ between those two options at least. Um, some of the others are a little different, but.
All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we we um continue to highlight that we have a significant uh development going on there that should see a noticeable rise in pedestrian density. Um, I mean, that's that's the goal, I guess, I hope. Um. And then the last thing I, you know, wanted to talk about is the twelve million that's already on the table. Can we have a brief discussion about um what color that money is, if it's, you know, if it's if we went for grant opportunities, say a builder and infra or something to um be able to afford this type of improvement project. Is that money accessible from a state match perspective? Um, can we have that discussion about you know, how to kind of multiply this money to um a number that actually can get the project done?
Yeah, I'd be, again, I I'd be, well, to to the C dot members, I'd be looking Andy or Jessica for some support, I guess, on that discussion. But um, as far as the 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 way it was broken down, uh, is Commerce City contributed one point five million. C dot five point seven five million, four million of which is freight through freight funding. Uh, and then an approved four point seven five million from Dr. Cobb subregional funding uh to equal twelve million in that case. As far as opportunities for grants and so forth, uh, that is something we would be we would have to explore in the fut- in the future. We had preliminarily looked at, when we're looking at the modified traditional intersection uh originally, we thought was possible further freight funding applications uh faster uh or other safety-related funding that we could go after uh in others to fill that gap. I would have to, oh, if there's, is there others from C dot that would like to chime in related to that?
I I don't, I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I mean,
No, no, it's okay.
I work at C dot, understand the funding. I just wanted to make sure that we have that discussion kind of openly, because
Yep.
Uh, the four million dollars of freight funding is for National Highway Freight Program, which is an eighty-twenty split to start. And so not all of that twelve million dollar would be accessible in that situation just because of that. And so I just want to make sure that the expectations for everybody is kind of laid out on the line early. We can't go in counting twelve um trying to get to fifty-five and counting twelve upfront um as a possible state match. We we have to be realistic on, you know, where the funding would come from, what type of applications and support we could get for those applications um to get to this number, because right now, you know, the twelve million dollars seems like it's gonna fund you know, improvements to the uh intersection light lighting sequences. Um, and so, you know, if we're going to expand the project to this type of scope, to that type of price tag, I just think we need to have um discussions on how the city and city council can support moving forward to look for that additional funds, because a- as everybody, I mean, everybody's funds are going to be tight for the next at least three years. Um, so just having a realistic conversation there, I think would be helpful helpful for this group, so we don't um get ahead of ourselves.
Councilmember Noble.
Uh, could we go back to the diamond again? It it could just be in the drawing, but do the businesses that are on uh each of the corners, are they isolated? I can't tell if there's still ingress and egress that they currently have.
Oh, we would have to look at that further in this in this particular case, such as in the. Uh, the north, you could see there in the northwest corner, we have those initially marked as not. Having specific access.
Right, that's what I thought.
And. We would, we we need to look at it closer for operationally with our traffic group and then operationally. How it functions to have those to have those open. Uh, I want to be careful that the expectation, we don't set the expectation that we can have all of them. Or that we can't have any. Uh, I think it's a refinement of the detail. It's a detailed refinement that we have to look at.
Right. And then the below grade sends people flying through. Passing by all these businesses that have been used to having people get off at the intersection to do something. To go to one of these many restaurants, for example. And next thing you know, it's like being on the interstate and that town becomes isolated and the businesses go out of business. So I I think to a degree. I hate to say this, but in addition to wanting more data is to go back to the drawing board. Because this is a, if I recall correctly, this is a fifty million dollar project too, and we're hurting our businesses.
Councilmember Hearst.
I'll learn, I promise.
I'd like to point out as well that. Councilmember Grimes, you had asked for an opinion. This is, it it still would be, it would be pretty impactful. And you're still having to consider a lot of utilities, groundwater issues. You know, groundwater, the condition of the groundwater in the area and and possibly treating that. So there there still is, I I feel there's a lot of risk here as well. And you'd be excavating out quite a bit of the area and putting in retaining laws. To get Vasquez lowered. So it's just something to further consider if if it were an option that we would look at further. In this case. And again, to councilmember Hearst's point. Uh, before and and others, we're still in the range of fifty sixty million. Plus sixty five million in is shown here. Preliminary. Uh, cost estimate. It's just something to keep in mind as we're, if we decide, if if you. You know, help us with figure out those next steps to move forward.
If I can add one more thing, just to kind of confuse the whole thing about having an overpass. Two seventy supported forty six thousand, six hundred plus oversized overweight single trip permits in the last three years. Lot of their origin and destinations happen in Commerce City. And so vertical clearance is always going to be an issue throughout Commerce City. We have very limited route opportunities in the area because we have some older railroad structures that limit your your routing options. You know, from what I do for the state, that's what we focus on, but those are on the state roads. When they get into the city, they also have their own set of challenges that I might not be as familiar with. And so just consider that too, if we if we built an underpass or an overpass, however you want to say it. We would need significant vertical clearance. Without, you know, significantly choking off one of the viable routes in the area. So it would need to be higher than the railroad structure up the road. And so I guess that wouldn't be too tough in certain situation, but we'd have to dig a pretty deep hole.
Any other questions or comments regarding the subject? Yes, Mayor. So just to summarize, at least for for C dot and staff's perception. We want to move forward with looking at what Ryan called the modified traditional intersection. And then also look at the the diamond intersection as possible future options. Believe so. Councilmember Grimes, you have your hand up.
I was, I I unfortunately, your comments, Ryan. Bring me more pause and I have to agree with councilmember Noble. I almost think that if of the options you've presented, there's not one that. You could get behind or your team could get behind as a kind of a prevailing preference. Um, I don't know that there's an excellent option here. There's not, there's not one that has better pros. To offset the cons, it looks like. And so I guess to further my question from before, you know, if it was, if it was up to you. Do you think there are better options if you go back to the drawing board? Are we really just looking at what are these the options and we're kind of just stuck with? The the lesser of two evils, if you will.
Well. I. I tend to generally agree. I think a a big challenge of this area is there might not be quite as much room. Is what it might just visually look like initially as to what can fit in the area. And so you are somewhat limited to either kind of, you're you're limited to what we're seeing here. We have, we have really thought a lot about the this area, what what could what could go in here. Um, and to keep it within the current footprint is quite a bit of a challenge. And without going to a great extent of impacting the area to some of the points we've made, such as clearance. Excavating quite a bit through the area. It it's it's, I generally think that we are somewhat limited to what can be done without. Uh, a great amount of impact. And. Yeah, I'll 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 leave it at that because we're really looking for, I I know the council had some concerns earlier. And I don't want to, I I want to make sure that. You know, we're moving forward with what your desires are in the area and showing you what we feel are the impacts and risks to to each of those. I think, but by what we were looking at before, what we're calling the modified traditional intersection had some. Had some pretty good benefits to it at a lower at a lower price in lower risk. Order of magnitude. Now, is there anybody from my team that would like to say something or from C dot to add to that?
Yeah, this is Andy with C dot. No, I think I think, Ryan, you you summarized it well. What we're looking at, you know, we we looked at all the different options, the the tight constraints. Just leave us to where we are right here, right? The the modified traditional intersection allows the least impact to the area and provides a great benefit. To the area in in, you know, cleaning up some of the access and allowing. Cars to get through the intersection, still access the businesses in a safe way, gives you new access up at sixty second. You know, we have the opportunity to build a pedestrian overpass for pedestrians if they want. And allows us to continue to explore that grade separated tight diamond in the future. Because a lot of the infrastructure that we build and move forward with right now can stay in place and complements that. Uh, great separation in the future. So I I think your council members hit on it a little earlier when when they talked about. How the tight diamond and this modified traditional intersection kind of go forward. You know, we've done two studies of this area and had multiple people provide input on what they thought could be done in this area. As we lay things out, the impacts are just are just really great. And and trying to avoid it, it we come down to to what we have here, so. But but I do think as we run the operations on these, you know, we are going to see a lot of great benefit to this area to access. Moving forward with the investment that we'd make.
I I appreciate the feedback.
One last call. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's move on.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next on the agenda is the two seventy quarter improvement update. Yeah, I, this is Brent Soderland again. So I think we'll just move forward with turning it over to Director Lou again to kick off the two seventy presentation. I believe they they want to update us on the public meetings they had and some of the input they received from the public meeting. So Director Lou, if you want to kick that off.
Thanks. Before we turn to two seventy, I just want to kind of quickly touch on the really productive back and forth we just had on the. Um, on the Vasquez project. You know, that's precisely the kind of feedback we were looking for. So, you know, we we will we will take it, we will digest it, and that will not be the last conversation we have prior to sort of making a directional decision. So, you know, thank you to everybody for kind of giving us your honest take and, you know. Telling telling us what your sort of questions and skepticism on some of the options are. So, you know, very, very much appreciated and, you know, to be continued on that discussion. Um, so I I think we have some specific do outs, particularly in terms of some of the data questions that were asked relative to the current intersection. We will get back on those, but we'll also sort of digest all of the thoughts that you've had and have a subsequent. Opportunities to talk about it. So regarding two seventy. You know, thank thank you again to everyone who has been a part of the environmental assessment process thus far. You know, I think the last time we spoke about this, we sort of. Walked through some of the technology enhancements we've adopted in the public comment for this project. You know, from our perspective, we've been very enthused by how much participation there was in the virtual public meeting. I think it's actually a template that we'll probably continue to use even after COVID because it. Made the public comment process accessible, whether or not, you know, folks had the time to come to our meeting. So, you know, again, I appreciate any and all user feedback on. On how folks experienced that process, but from what we're seeing, we got a lot of good input and. Um, and have really been enthused by how much people are engaging in the process. You know, what we're going to talk about today are some of the configurations that are under consideration. Nick Farber is here too from HPTE, and one of the things we're going to talk about, knowing that this is a point of specific interest and, you know, with some. Sensitivities about it is the question of of, you know, a managed lane in addition to the general purpose land. So that's something we'll start to talk about and start to talk about how that could play out. And just generally, we want to, again, like we did in the last conversation, just get everybody's candid take on where we are with this project. So with that, take it away, team.
Thank you, Director Lou. You can go to the next slide. Great. So I'm Jessica Mickelbost. I'm the Deputy Director of Program Delivery for C dot Region One. And then you'll be hearing also from Adam Parks. He's the I two seventy C dot project manager. And as Director Lou mentioned, you'll hear from Nick Farber, our HPTE director as well this evening. So we just wanted to spend a little bit of time getting you up to speed on where we were. Um, over the last several months and all the work that we've done, and then give you a sneak peek into what's coming around the corner in December. So on the screen, you've got the project process and schedule. And you can see, you know, we've done a lot of work between April and now it's already November. We had our first public outreach event, which Director Lou mentioned, and we had a lot of success. Uh, we sent out over seven thousand postcards to constituents and we had a really. Robust public meeting room on a virtual platform that worked out very well, and we got really good feedback about that. We will be doing that same platform again in December. So tonight is really kind of your sneak peek about some of the messaging that will be coming out in December for that virtual room. Uh, we've been looking at alternatives, you know, what what's going on in the corridor, what space do we have? The good news about the two seventy corridors, Adam might talk a little more, is that we've got a lot of right away width in that corridor. So we have a lot of room to work with, which is which is really great. And and we know that the time is right. Just today, there was a a bridge deck with a big hole in it right around exit two A. So we had some our team members out there repairing the bridge. So we understand, you know, the needs in the corridor are growing daily with the congestion and just the aging infrastructure. So as we're looking at alternatives, we're taking those things into consideration as well. Uh, we are rapidly preparing an environmental assessment, looking at doing, you know, some robust air quality analysis. A lot of engagement with your community members. We've been reaching out to schools and to churches and to community organizations. And really getting down to the grassroots to hear from them as well. Um, so that's really kind of where we are right now. We're getting ready to leap into that virtual next virtual meeting, which will be telling the public. Um, a little bit about the alternatives that we're looking at, and that's really what Adam will cover tonight. So as we move ahead, we're looking forward to hearing back from you on, you know, how we frame that messaging to really hear and get the most from our public engagement process.
Thanks, Jessica. This is Adam Parks, resident engineer and project manager for the EA out there, and good to see you all again. This is a quick video, just as a teaser, really to show some of the progress we've made in our conceptual design. Uh, you can see on the left hand, that is the Vasquez interchange, which generated the highest number of comments of any. Point in the corridor at our public meeting. Many complaints at this location that's unsafe, unreliable, difficult for trucks to navigate. Uh, and we agree, it's really, it's an outdated design on the left. You can see it's a tight cloverleaf. Uh, that kind of interchange that we haven't built for, we haven't built interchanges in that design for at least thirty years. So on the right is a conceptual level showing that that we've, you know, come up with an option that would improve the flow of traffic. And keep things moving and decrease the some of those dangerous conflict points, some of the short weave areas. So without getting into too much detail, just wanted to show you that. And on this next slide, I'll go through some of the improvements that we are proposing. So we have found that the knee, the purpose and need on the project has really driven us to the decision that we we will need to reconstruct. And or widen portions of this corridor to meet current standards. Uh, it's, there's portions of the road that were designed more than fifty years ago and simple widening isn't sufficient. We'll have to do a full reconstruction in some places. There are structurally deficient bridges which would need to be removed and replaced. We're planning to add an additional travel lane in each direction. And of course, as was mentioned, express lanes are under consideration for that lane. We're also looking at auxiliary lanes between certain interchanges. And an auxiliary lane is defined as an additional lane between two interchanges. For accelerating, merging, truck climbing and exiting the freeway. So those really help operationally. And we're also looking at some modifications to ramps to create a collector ramp system. And Vasquez interchange, as I mentioned, so some of the changes we're proposing, and I'll give you a high level view here, is. Just the partial cloverleaf design, which removes those exit loops that are signed at twenty five miles an hour right now. That's a real challenge for trucks to to slow down before they make that exit. So we would be replacing those tight exit loops with more traditional ramps that. Tie into Vasquez with a simple two-phase signals. So it would be adding traffic signals down below, but they would be. There would be a lot of green time for Vasquez with a phase for left turners to exit the ramps. And also there is a missing ramp today, maybe some of you know about where you cannot go from northbound Vasquez to eastbound I two seventy. We had proposed to add that and also improve multimodal connections under I two seventy. And we are, we're working on some concepts for how we can improve that pedestrian route. Also, moving on to the next slide. So this is just really more information and background on why express lanes are being considered. And I'll just kind of go through some of the main reasons here. So the first would be predictable travel times. You know, for anyone that's used this, this roadway to get to the airport, I think they would greatly appreciate an opportunity to be able to bypass congestion to not miss a flight. There's many reasons that people may choose to use an express lane at certain times, just to save time. Express lanes offer choice, you know, they, they can be used, someone can can choose to carpool and use the express lanes for free. They can pay a toll to use the express lanes as a solo driver, or they can use the general purpose lanes for free as they are right next to the express lane. The next one is, we've also seen in many other cases across the state that when express lanes are added, that we see travel times improve for all of the lanes. And there's, there's several reasons for this. One is it's just obviously pulling some capacity, you know, out of those free lanes into the express lane. Also, I think there's an element of relief if there is congestion or an accident or anything impeding the flow, you'll see more vehicles escaping to bypass that congestion through a lane that's open. A traditional roadway would not have an open lane to relieve the, some of that pressure in an accident situation. We've also, we're looking at the fact that express lanes do move more people rather than cars. That's something that would, it would encourage more carpooling. It encourages expansion of bus service. The next column over here on the right, express lanes do provide flexibility into the future. Some of you may remember the I two twenty-five T-Rex added lanes. Within a few years, those lanes were overwhelmed with traffic. We're seeing similar results as we look at modeling on I two seventy, that additional lanes, there's no way to guarantee that they would not also become congested over time as, you know, supply and demand works that way where there's, if there's a opportunity to make a trip, you know, it generates, you know, it can quickly be filled. So express lanes are managed throughout their lifetime to provide travel times that are reliable and free of congestion. Also, local and regional bus routes could just freely evolve and expand over time to maximize that ridership. Next one is the funding challenge. We really do have a problem with funding in our state, really, where, you know, this corridor, we have less than half of what we need right now to go ahead, to do a project of this magnitude. So there are opportunities with express lanes that can provide financing, other avenues, to get a project much sooner than we would otherwise. And of course, lastly, we are required to consider managed lanes per our policy directive whenever we are doing capacity improvements. So one more slide quick before I hand it over to Nick is just that the typical cross section we're looking at would be a full standard. This is similar to if you've driven US thirty-six from Boulder to Denver. That's a good example of a complete reconstruction that you was able to, had the space to really provide full standard shoulders, 12 foot wide, also a four foot buffer, which increases the safety for that express lane. And it, we saw a decreased, well, I won't steal the thunder from the next slide, so I'll hand it over to Nick at this point.
Thanks, Adam. I'm Nick Farber. I'm the Director of the Colorado High Performance Transportation Enterprise. We're the express lane innovative finance division of the C dot. And over the past few years, as US thirty-six has been operating, we've seen travel time improvements in the general purpose lanes increased between 20 and 29%. Crash rates have been reduced 8%. Obviously, have increased transit mobility options through the corridor. But if you choose to ride the bus, you ride for the fare. If you have three or more people, you ride in the express lane for free. And if you choose to do so, you could pay the toll and use the express, express lane. And as Adam was saying, get to where you're going. I know you're going to get to where you're going on time. I don't have to go to the next line. Now, obviously, when we use express lanes in certain corridors, equity issues come up. And I think we see, across the country, you see, at least you see three different equity issues. Those are, one is income equity, the ability of potential users to afford to use an express lane. You hear people throw around the term Lexus lane, but our research shows that at least the express lanes in Colorado are, you know, Ford lanes or Honda lanes. And research from across the country shows that users from both the middle income and lower income make up the majority of express lane users. There's also modal equity, you know, concern, there's the concern that the general purpose lanes will suffer as the, as if you impose the use of an express lane. But, you know, as we see on US thirty-six, as we just saw on the last slide, that, you know, travel, bus usage on the US thirty-six has gone up 45% because the users of transit know that they are going to get to where they, to their destination on time. That's because there's no more sitting in traffic. There's no more, you know, guessing or trying to make the right bus to get where you're going on time. And there's geographic equity when it comes to using express lanes as well. I think in terms of where we put them and and how they could be affect certain communities in that area. We are trying to use express lanes across the, as we look to expand capacity across the Denver metro area in the states. So for example, there's the South Gap Project, C four seventy, the Mountain Express Lane and I twenty-five, a US thirty-six, Central seventy. We have 108 lane miles of express lanes in operation right now. We have 115 lane miles under construction from the Fort Collins area all the way down to Monument. So we're trying to also look at, at least on the Central seventy project, in terms of geographic and income equity programs to help alleviate those equity concerns. There's a number of options that we're looking at. We're, we've actually are about to start a study to look at these equity issues and see how other states have brought about these programs and see what works here. And some options are like in the Los Angeles area. They give people who make under certain income each year $25 towards tolls and a free transponder if the transponder costs money. There's also the ability for some states and DOTs to give people credits for using transit. And then they turn those, that transit, those transit credits into free tolls. So there's a lot of different things we can do, and we're going to start looking at here on the Central seventy project. And I think that will translate over to the 270 project. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think all of us are happy to answer any questions if I have about any of the slides here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone on council who has any questions or comments for C dot or staff regarding this item? Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for presenting them tonight. I had mentioned that a previous presentation when you guys spoke to us. Well, Commerce City hasn't been found out yet if Commerce City will get any of the percentage of the money for the express lanes?
So in terms, you know, toll revenue is usually on most corridors where it's used to pay for a part of the project that usually goes back like on I twenty-five, segment two. It's pledged to repayment of debt and has to be used according to federal regulation. It has to be used for either extending that lane, either further north, further south, further east, further west, or for the operations of the express lane itself. So it really can't go for uses outside of transportation use. So like for instance, other quarters like C four seventy or I twenty-five, if there's excess revenue, it goes back into the corridor itself. And our statute also mandates that the revenue earned on a corridor has to stay within that corridor or with an integrated system that that corridor connects to.
So do we know if any other cities or counties receive a percentage from money from express lanes?
No, they don't because of the reasons I just stated. Because on most, like on I twenty-five, segment two, we don't have any debt from, segment two, excuse me, I'm kind of speaking in code, I twenty-five, segment two goes from US thirty-six to 120. We don't have any debt on that corridor. So we, after we pay for operations and maintenance on that corridor, the rest stays in HPD's fund, it's toll revenue fund. And that has gone to pay for additional safety improvements on the corridor, Colorado State Patrol patrolling the corridor. It's also gone towards some of the work that we're doing on 270. For instance, we're helping out with some environmental studies on the, on the corridor. So it doesn't come back to the community, actually just comes back to help C dot and HPT further additional projects along or help the safety in the corridor itself.
And another question, do we know who's going to manage the project? Because most projects that deal with toll facilities are under companies that are outside of Colorado, is that correct?
No, so there's two public private partners, I think you're saying of public private partnerships. And public private partnerships are a way to help fund a project. It's not, it's financing, not funding, I should say. And it's a way to accelerate projects that otherwise couldn't have been done, for instance, in a certain timeframe. US thirty-six wasn't, the second phase wasn't slated to be done until 2035. We accelerated that project with the help of Plenary Roads Denver. And on Central seventy, we helped with Q and Meridian Partners. It was more of a risk transfer type of situation and accelerating the project itself as well. Where C dot and HPT are actually going to be collecting the toll revenue on Central seventy. But other projects like I twenty-five, C four seventy, I twenty-five South, and the Mountain Express Lane projects, they don't are, they are operated by the HPTE and not by like a foreign or a private company like US thirty-six or something. And, you know, you know, to dispel the rumor that they're really not foreign companies, you know, Plenary is a subsidiary of a Canadian pension fund, but all the people who work here on the project are American and that money, yeah, is, they use to pay off the debt to to help further that project along.
So could I two seventy be under control of Commerce City with construction bonds from the 2K funding? And we could receive the proceeds and also have the toll revenue pay back the construction debt?
Usually with, I mean, that could be a part of the funding package for the project, if I think I understand your question correctly. But HPT with the help of C dot would operate the, the project. If, you know, one of the things we do on every project, no matter if it's operated by HPT or not, is that we do what they call a value for money study to see whether or not it makes sense for us to procure the project as a public private partnership. But that entails a lot of public outreach, a lot of feedback from, obviously, the stakeholders along the corridor before we even make a decision like that.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Councilmember Noble?
Thank you. I am a little bit confused. Who is the private partner in this project?
There is no public, a private partner in this project.
There is none at this point.
Not at this point.
All right. And has our city staff, so all of 270 is within Commerce City, correct?
Ninety percent. Actually, maybe even less than that. There's a, there's a portion that is outside, boundaries on the west end and also the east end as well.
So I'm curious if our city staff has taken a look at being the project managers of 270? It's a question for staff.
We have not, we don't have that capability, capacity from a staffing resource level. And in answer to the earlier question, our 2K initiative does not have, pardon me, adequate bond authority to take on a project of this size.
Thank you very much for that and for Councilmember Alan Thomas's answer too. I know that there is concern about the express lane. And based on the information that you provided for Boulder, there seemed to be a reduction of 20%. 270 is a nightmare highway. It's easy to see why this is a terrible problem. My question is, like going around in circles, let me do the, do this one first. Is Denver redirecting any of the I seventy traffic onto 270? And will it continue to do so with the changes to I seventy?
I can answer on the construction side of that. And that kind of follows up from your, some earlier questions as far as detouring during construction. You know, we will plan to keep 270. Currently, there are two lanes in each direction. We would keep those open throughout construction with the exception of safety critical events such as bridge girders or demolition, things like that. And during those times, we would route, we would keep travelers on the freeway system and route them via I seventy and twenty-five. Actually, that's what the, the Central seventy project has had to do similar things when they're doing a safety critical event. Though actually, they've been rerouting their traffic onto 270 occasionally for an overnight or a weekend. So we wouldn't be sending any cars off the system during construction. And, yeah, I don't know if that answers your whole question.
The, I have used the Boulder express lanes many, many, many times because after a two-year wait, I was one of the fortunate people to have a sticker on my window for my Prius. But of course, I can't do that anymore. But I can assure you that it's not just Lexus, it's BMW, it's Tesla, it's Jaguar, it's giant SUVs mowing people down in the express lane. That's what they use it for, is to speed. And I know our residents are very concerned that they're going to be pushed out of that lane and that it is genuinely not going to benefit them in any way. And if the reduction is only 20%, it doesn't seem like this is actually benefiting the people who live in the area.
Well, and I think I'll, I'll take your, your comment in two parts. I think with the speed, yeah, we totally agree with you on that. And that's why on US thirty-six, Plenary has hired four Colorado State Patrol officers to patrol the corridor and to
I wish they did.
Then they provide us monthly reports on it as well. And I twenty-five, we do the same thing. We've, HPT is, is a contract with State Patrol to help with speed enforcement speed reduction on I twenty-five. Yeah, and that's one message we're trying Speed reduction on I twenty five, yeah, and that's one message we're trying to always get across to people. Like, look, this is not the Autobahn, this is not, in the express lane, there's not a license to speed, you can still go the speed limit, you will get a ticket. In terms of your other question. Another statement, councilmember, you know, that's why we're looking at these. That's now why right now, especially on Central Seventy and on two seventy, we'll be looking at these equity issues. And how we can help residents of Commerce City, Globeville, Swansia neighborhoods. To help them use the express lane, help them also be a beneficiary of of. The get, you know, that reduction in travel time, we don't want to leave people by the wayside. And that's not something myself as director or I think anyone at C dot wants to see. I think as we develop these programs, I think we'll definitely be looking for your input. So I mean, more, stay tuned for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
So just to confirm, the new lands would both be express lanes, right?
That's something we know we're still, as Adam was saying, you know, we haven't completely identified that yet, but. That option is on the table.
So there wouldn't be any new lanes for everyone else? That's not paying?
There wouldn't be additional lanes that go end to end per se, but there are. A lot of improvements at the merges, at the interchanges, and also what what's called auxiliary lanes that. Connect particularly York to Vasquez, that area is is really a problem, it's it is the main bottleneck. And so that's one area where we want to provide more space for trucks to climb in an auxiliary lane rather than blocking other cars. So there would be some extra space, I believe you could say.
Yeah, because I'm struggling adding all of the express lanes, I mean, from my experience, they do help, but it takes a long time and then. You know, as far as two seventy, I feel like you're almost strong arming people into, you know, using these express lanes. Because, you know, it's backed up all the way from end to end, you know, I twenty five to I seventy a lot of times. So, yeah, people are going to use it, they're going to pay for it. But, you know, you guys have mentioned about people getting left out. And I feel, you know, that's going to be something that, you know, needs to be addressed by either having more lanes or. Or something else, you know, in this project. Because if it's only going to be express lanes, I don't know if I can get on board with that. Because, you know, I use the express lanes every day, I'm away to and from work, you know, on I twenty five and. It's a privilege, you know, being able to to do that. And, you know, the the express lanes on I twenty five will have handful of cars and the rest of the highway will be backed up. And if we're doing this for. For future, you know, relief. I I think by the time the this isn't an express lane anymore, if it ever gets to that point, it's already going to be at capacity. So I feel like we have to look ahead and be a little bit more inclusive and. You know, how we are approaching to solving this problem, because I I do think the longer on ramps are definitely going to help. Getting rid of those clover leaves is going to help a lot and, you know, there is. A turn missing, but if you go on the clover leaves enough, so you can eventually get there, which is what the the semis do, you know. You'll see them go around, you know, all those movements, just to get on the the right side from the exit.
That's, and thank you for those comments, I would add that. The, and there's my daughter behind us. I would add that. The. I'm sorry, Addie, go tell them to be quiet, please. The, the, okay. What I was trying to say is that we did traffic modeling recently, we got some results. And the the results show that pretty significant improvements across all lanes. Because of those auxiliary lanes, so, you know, we we like to use these heat maps and it, just like you said, the. The roadway is is all red, which is speeds under twenty five for most of the day today. And then, Addie, do not come in again, thank you. And the. Anyway, the. So the the improvement is is quite a bit, we're down to the point where we have yellow speeds and a lot of green and across all lanes, which is which is great. So.
And we didn't see that on the Mountain Express line, and I was talking to Clare Creek County today. Just by diverting between eight and a half and nine percent of traffic. Coming down from the ski areas, we're able to increase. Speeds in the general purpose lanes, you know, from standstill to sixty to seventy miles an hour. And I think we've seen that on US thirty six, nine twenty five as well.
So what's the bottleneck on York? Because I mean, that drives me crazy when you're going in that direction. And it's like there's nothing there, but as soon as you pass York, it opens up, is it just the additional lanes, you know, past York?
It's, it's, you're exactly right, it's the bottleneck and it's because York is a half interchange. So the ramps are only extending in the east direction, so you get a lot more volume east of that point. So that's why we're proposing those auxiliary lanes to continue to Vasquez, so all that volume coming in as a chance to merge. And exitters have time to, you know, get in that lane for exiting a lot sooner. That that really does relieve the the bottleneck in the heart of the corridor.
And how long do you think this solution will be good for? I mean, I I know we, with transportation, we're always five, ten years behind, so.
So we looked at the general purpose option and it shows we would still have some red. If we in order to add just regular traditional lanes, there were still some red sections, red spots. The express lanes looked pretty similar, although of course, with the added benefit of. A lane that is free flowing for the entire lifetime of of the roadway, so. And once we have those refined, you know, we'd be happy to share those, you know, those those heat maps, I think, if you're interested.
Example I always point to is T-Rex project. The T-Rex was built in the early two thousands, finished in the mid two thousands, and, you know, here we are, you know, fifteen years later. And it's jam packed, it's it's where it was pre-construction. As we continue to see growth here in the state of Colorado and. And traffic growth as well. In relation to the population growth, that lane will always, you know, we will always have one lane that's free flow.
Thank you, yeah, I was happy to hear a couple of my points were discussed already, so I'll just be brief, but. You know, if one thing that's taught me through this pandemic is just that there's quite a few critical businesses off the two seventy corridor. And, you know, just confirmed that fact, when you look at the traffic numbers and the density and how quickly. You know, two seventy rebound, you can see that, and and really, there's a, there's, you know, I got. Kind of a negative perspective and a positive perspective on this, you know, one of the reasons we see significant truck traffic congestion. Is due to the way hazmat routing works. So two seventy is really the, you know, you can't use the old mousetrap. That whole area and the elevated portion of I seventy. Are not hazmat routes, so all hazmat going north, south is forced onto two seventy in some shape or form. And, you know, and then on to two twenty five if it's traveling south. And so with the businesses and infrastructure that we have in Commerce City, we're always going to have a significant hazmat traffic. And that's, you know, where we talk about the bigger picture, is when we have the E four seventy. Vote to allow them to apply to be a hazmat route, you know, that's still in the works from their side. But that's part of that bigger picture too, is is, you know, they're they're stepping up to try to take on some of that north, south hazmat traffic. That's not generated in North or or Commerce City, to try to eliminate some of that congestion off of two seventy. The Central Seventy project, there's been no decision if that becomes a hazmat route or not, that's a that's a significant discussion and decision. But that's a a secondary option as to move some of that hazmat traffic and more free free routing along seventy instead of just on two seventy. So, you know, you can share some of that burden. So, yeah, I just think, you know, in terms of the way that the network's set up, we have some disadvantages that we're working against from the beginning. And we just have to keep those in mind and kind of work work at those solutions kind of holistically. And take that that high level view. I guess the positive side, though, is all the modeling shows improvements and similar to what we're just seeing. And, you know, modeling is modeling, there's a lot that goes into the input that has to be right for good modeling to happen. But I'm pretty confident, just from working at C dot for four years, that the modeling is pretty, pretty good. And there's, there's. You know, ancillary benefits to just improve travel time, obviously, if we can keep trucks traveling at a at a reasonable rate. That's a benefit to our economy, but it's also, they're significantly polluting less when they're at speed than when they're stop and go. And so if you can keep consistent traffic, we have less GHGs, less VOCs right there next to our community. And you can see multiple ancillary benefits that come from keeping two seventy flowing. At a better pace, you know, there's still going to be, you know, congestion times. It's it's kind of because it's such a benefit, kind of such a shortcut, if it is flowing good. You're always going to have people wanting to utilize it because it is the best way to travel if you're going from seventy to twenty five north or something like that. And so I think if at least the modeling shows significant improvements just to to reducing the time of congestion, that would be a huge win as well. Again, we're working within some pretty stringent parameters like we are on the Vasquez interchange or the Vasquez side. So, you know. I think there's going to be, you know, continued challenges because of the that kind of hazmat infrastructure. And the businesses that we have in Commerce City, so we just have to be, you know, open minded on how we're going to. Work around some of those challenges or work within those challenges while also taking a more holistic approach on how to. Move some of that traffic off two seventy onto other major corridors that can support that.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, I just had one last question, is there an estimated total cost to date what the project would cost?
Yeah, we have estimates from, they're about twelve months old and we're refreshing those estimates this month. So by the end of the month, we'll have a better confidence in that, but right now, it's it's roughly five hundred million, so very significant cost.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I'm sorry, man, I thought when I got called on it, puts my hand down.
Any other questions or comments for C dot or for staff regarding this? Seeing none, would like to thank Director Lou as well as all the members of C dot who came out this evening in order to present these two presentations to us. As well as Brent Soderlin and the public work staff for doing so. Next on the agenda is Commerce City Public Health Order Ambassador Outreach and Education. Will Carolyn Keith Parks and Rick and Golf Director please make the presentation?
Dylan, if you can bring up the presentation, please. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. I'm here tonight to talk to you briefly about a program, Commerce City Public Health Order, PHO Ambassador Outreach and Education. Go ahead and advance, Dylan. As you, as we all know, that there's a continuing rise in COVID cases in Adams County and quite frankly, through the metro area. And Tri County is struggling with, they don't have enough staff to help. Carry out some of their public programs, and so the purpose of my, the purpose of the Ambassador Outreach and Education. It would be to assist with helping to provide education that would help hopefully improve the rates of compliance. With, I'm going to say current public health orders, as we all know, those health orders change, they change frequently. They can change on the dime and we're all expected to respond very quickly. The objective of the Public Health Order Ambassador would be to work closely with Tri County Health and Adams County. To help with some of, in our case, it would be the education and outreach as appropriate. Tri County currently operates a compliance task force of which Roger, I believe, participates. And given the high volume of complaints and their limited staff resources, most of their complaints are handled over the phone. And the staff's unable to respond to all the complainants. One thing that I've learned since we put this presentation together. Adams County Code Enforcement and Animal Control actually handle the. Observation and inspection component for all of Adams County, which includes Commerce City. So Commerce City staff would not be involved in any observation or inspection. As I mentioned, that's currently done through the county. There was, at first, we were contemplating the possibility of getting, trying to provide some assistance to Tri County Health. But but that is covered by the county at this point. So what Commerce City would be looking at is assisting Tri County with education outreach. And we would not be doing monitoring of public health. What we would do, if you can advance this slide to the next slide, Dylan. County would provide that observation and inspection, and they do report back to Tri County. Because ultimately, regardless of who's doing observation and inspection. Or if Commerce City staff is dispersing information on the current public health order. Giving them material that businesses, HOAs, whomever we can provide outreach to. Really with, this is a temporary because it would be funded with our CARES Act funding, so it would be very quick. But the whole effort is is about getting information out into our community. Go ahead, Dylan. As I mentioned, we'd reach, try to be doing outreach to businesses, organizations and HOAs. We would work very closely with Tri County Health, we would not be doing the observations visits. If you can go ahead and move forward, Dylan. I mentioned CARES Act funding would be our funding source and we would have to use this by December fourth. So we're looking at some of our timelines, this would really, we'd be doing outreach and education. Just prior to Thanksgiving, we would be looking at using our existing variable hour employee pool. And doing training and education that Tri County would assist us with or provide us the information. The oversight of these variable hour employees would be by one of our existing PRG full time employees, if you want to go ahead and move forward. And I guess the purpose of tonight was really to see if city council would support the idea of. Commerce City working with Tri County to provide these ambassadors that could provide some additional outreach and education in our community. It has been determined that we wouldn't need to enter into an IGA with Tri County, there wouldn't be any funds exchanged. Between the two agencies and our employees would would perform these duties as employees of Commerce City. So I guess with that peace in mind, really what I'm asking, one, would council be supportive? Of the idea of an ambassador program to provide outreach and education within our community? And do you think that's important or valuable? Dylan, if you want to go ahead and move forward. That's really the bottom line, just very briefly, especially since we don't need to look at the idea of. An IGA with Tri County, so I I'm just curious if. Not curious, but let me see if council feels that. Not curious, but let me see if council feels that, one, this would be good use of some of our CARES Act funding. Um, and um, if you do, then we would move forward um, very quickly. To try to provide some outreach and education material over really the next couple of weeks. And that's the bottom line. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or your opinions.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. And thanks for the presentation. Um, I would be in support of it, but I just have a, like, a few questions. Do we know yet, um, since like the core of the city? Um, how would we reach out to residents in the core of the city since we don't have HOAs? Has that been thought about yet?
Yeah, Councilwoman, um, we would be looking at local businesses, um, probably, one of our local businesses. Yeah, we have a lot of folks that congregate in our parks. You know, I think there's a lot of different ways. We can share information with local churches. Um, there's a lot of local organizations throughout the entire community, um, in addition to, to HOAs. Um, and we produce a lot of information on our website and, you know, with our.
That's exactly, that's just a concern you mentioned. Parks, you know, are in the prime season of the winter.
Sure.
Um, you know, and a lot of, you know, as everyone knows, a lot of people don't have access to the internet as well. So that's a concern. How are we gonna reach the residents? Plus with the COVID, a lot of residents can't go anywhere as well and the numbers are of course increasing. So that's a concern. How are we gonna reach the residents, you know, that don't have the HOA? So I hope.
Sure.
That can be thought about.
Absolutely. And I think that's, you know, our printed material that does go to our, every household. Like the connected, the community connected. Um, but we can certainly look at other, other means to do that. But I think local churches, businesses, you know, there's a lot of different places.
Yeah, but that's the thing, like I said, a lot of residents aren't even, we're not even really allowed to gather in a church right now. So, you know, I hope that's looked into further because, you know, we can't, with the COVID, you know, we need to find another way to reach. The residents. Um, and then another question I had. Will this be an increased burden on the current employees for the city, um, since we would be adding to their duties?
No, we're actually looking at our variable hour employees where their hours have been reduced. Um, this certainly is a volunteer. What, when I say volunteer, we're asking people that are interested in performing these duties. It would be compensated for those duties. But it's really an opportunity to provide some hours. Where their hours may have been reduced due to our modifications and programs and hours of operation.
Okay, so what if you didn't get anybody to volunteer, then what, what, what's?
We would reach out. I, you know, I think, one, it takes, it's, takes a, it takes a certain kind of person to do this work. So we would probably reach out to some of our um, more experienced variable hour employees and ask them if they would be interested. If we didn't get folks, but we are, we do have variable hour employees that are looking for hours.
Mm-hmm, okay, alright. Yeah, thank you. But like I said, I just can't stress enough with, with the COVID, you know, being a reality. Take, figuring out ways how we're gonna reach out to everyone with no social gatherings.
Sure. And I, I can certainly, we can brainstorm that with Jody Hardy and her team. You know, I think churches and other organizations are keeping in touch with their folks. Um, so we, you know, we'll, we'll just have to look at every and every possible way that we can get information out or try to communicate with folks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noah.
Uh, thank you very much. Ms. Keith, really appreciate it. Um, it sounds like a great idea. But did you say it would be from the sixteenth to the twenty-second for six days?
Um, well, we're hoping to, is, we thought we were gonna have to wait um, for council to take action on an IGA. So we may be able to uh, start a little bit sooner. We're looking at the twenty-second because of the way our payroll is processed. Um, to have to have the funds expended prior to, you know, December fourth. There's a possibility we might be able to extend that. But yes, this is very short-lived at this point. Um, in regards to just the CARES Act funding. Um, certainly if we were to find some success in, in what or how we, this program might work. We could certainly come back to council at a later date and request funding or, you know, look at it from that perspective.
I believe I've heard one of the Adams County Commissioners say that as long as you have the CARES Act funds designated. To a program that will be supported, that it doesn't have to be expended by that date. So I hope someone will look into that again and ask them, because I think that's a possibility, that it could go longer. The other thing I would suggest is that they carry masks with them. So if uh, businesses uh, don't have any onsite, that you can provide them with. Uh, say a, a box of the um, you know, the blue masks or something to help them. Because I don't think the outreach and education would be as helpful as it would be. If you could actually leave them with tools that will help them succeed.
And, and that would be the part of the intent, Councilwoman Noble. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
I actually think this is a, a great idea. Um, I, I like the idea of maybe also being able to talk to them about. Uh, talking to businesses or whatever about um, additional funding possibilities. I think this could be a good opportunity for um, Commerce City to get some positive exposure. Um, considering that our cases are so high. I also am definitely um. Glad that we would be recruiting from the VHE employees, um, whose hours have been cut. I think that's really important. So I just wanna say I would definitely be in support of this.
Councilmember Guardiola.
Yeah, definitely echo uh, Mayor Pro, uh, Tim Frank said. Uh, I think this, thanks for thinking outside the box, um, especially for those VHE employees that have lost some hours. I think this will get them hopefully a, a little bit of extra money. Um, and uh, so I would definitely support this.
Councilmember Madara.
Yeah, I just wanted to voice my support as well for this. I think it's a great idea and uh, I'd definitely be in support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Guardiola.
Sorry, I didn't turn my, lower my hand.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I support this. I think, you know, why not try something new? Um, we, we need to, you know, educate people on what's, what's happening. That's the only way out of this thing. So not, not opposed to it at all.
Any other questions or comments for staff regarding this item? Councilmember Hurst.
I'm, I'm sorry. I should have just added this. So just wanna make sure I understood. We're not putting them into a situation where people are gonna, I mean, obviously people react differently. But this is purely um, an educational position that we're coming in on. And we're not coming in with our whistle, you know, and, and um, you know, being. It, you know, confrontational about anything, correct? I mean, I just wanna make sure we have kind of the same vision of what their, the interactions are supposed to be when they're, when they're doing this. Obviously, if they can hand out literature, bilingual literature, um, makes a lot of sense. You know, and have one-on-one conversations that are, you know, factual, that would be fantastic. But I just wanna make sure that that's the understanding that we all have going into this.
Um, absolutely, Councilman Hurst. Um, it is to disseminate material that Tri-County Health provides for us. Um, it could also be distributing masks or learning about what, you know, what sort of help they might need. With PPE, whomever we're talking to, and we could bring that back. We would not be responsible for what they refer to as the observation and inspection. Adams County, their Code Enforcement Animal Control Group. Um, at, uh, that Tri-County calls the supervisor of Code Enforcement there with the complaints that have been filed. They go out and do the observation and inspection and report back to Tri-County. Um, Tri-County then sends letters or makes an in-person appearance with that business. To um, manage any enforcement. We would not be doing that at all. This is really about education, outreach, um, answer questions or try to provide information. Um, which I can tell you, um, I know it won't work exactly the same way. But every Wednesday, I participate in a call with Adams County Park and Recreation Directors. Of which we also have a, a Tri-County Health Department member in that meeting. And it's extremely helpful to be able to ask questions, make sure you have the most up-to-date information because it is regularly changing. You know, the, the last amendment came out late Friday and we're scrambling to try to look at what and how we manage those changes. Um, so our intent is solely to provide um, outreach and education.
Councilmember, Member Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks Carolyn for the presentation. I'm also supportive. But like Councilmember Hurst, just wanted to make sure that this wasn't uh, use of VHEs for enforcement. Um, and also just curious if uh, once people volunteer to take on this role. If there will be any kind of training in terms of uh, conflict management or de-escalation of. Uh, maybe intense conversations, because this is a hot-button topic and lots of people have different opinions. And just wanna make sure we're not putting them in a position to be um, you know, in an argument with business owners.
A, and absolutely. And in some cases, Councilwoman Grimes, our staff has had some of that type of training. Because, believe it or not, people don't always appreciate all the rules associated with pools or use of recreation centers. Um, I think the other thing we would look at is sending people out in twos, not just one person. Um, and would always encourage folks not to engage, but to step away. Um, so yeah, we, we realize this has some, you know, potential volatility. But we're trying to make it a positive um, opportunity and hopefully. You know, so far, we haven't had a lot of challenges with some of the requirements with the recreation facilities or golf. As it relates to COVID nineteen. Doesn't mean we won't if we're participating in this program. But absolutely, we'll make sure we've got people, the resources that they need to feel comfortable to go out into the community and share the information.
Sounds good. Thanks, Carolyn.
Councilmember Noble.
Um, one more idea is to bring along uh, window signs that uh, folks can use. If they don't have them for uh, mass distancing, washing hands, that kind of stuff that they could leave behind.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Noble, did you have something to add?
I did not. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am, for bringing the presentation forward and for coming up with this idea and look forward to seeing it implemented. Next on the agenda is the South, South Platte Crossing follow-up information. Will John Borgeli, a management analyst, please make the presentation?
I've moved John over, but it looks like it's taken him a bit to get in. So uh, please bear with us while we load him back in.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Here tonight with some follow-up information uh, from our discussion two weeks ago about the South Platte Crossing. Uh, building purchase, uh, that fifth floor unit in the condo. Next slide, please, Dylan. Also, start with some, yeah, uh, so the purpose tonight is twofold. It's to review council direction uh, and answer some questions, bring back some more data. From our discussion at the October twenty-sixth study session. Then also to facilitate a discussion of some key consideration points uh, for the, for this purchase. Uh, so some of those questions from that October study session, or to seek a thirty-day extension to the deadlines. Provide context for these capital costs presented out from the FCA. Uh, to draft a potential business model or what potential lease arrangements would look like. Once this build, uh, this unit is purchased, assuming this goes forward. And to also discuss more broadly the future physical office space in a growing remote environment. And then finally, tonight also asking for direction moving forward from council on this. On next slide, please, Dylan. So quick summary of uh, information I'm coming back to you with. We have amended the PSA to extend deadlines out thirty days, which means the objection deadline is now December ninth. And a potential closing date would be December twenty-fourth. Uh, anticipating potential further discussion and questions from council. We're also working to negotiate an additional thirty-day extension that would push the, the deadlines out to January eighth and twenty-third respectively. And I will provide an update uh, when we have more information about how those negotiations are proceeding with our outside counsel. The estimated total tenure cost, including purchase capital improvements, potential remodel, operation and maintenance. And condominium assessment fees are essentially the dues for the COA would be about five million dollars. And then we also have a couple of big consideration points when discussing whether or not council wishes to proceed with this purchase. Such as the, the business model or, or purpose used in this building, as well as more broadly the future of having physical office space. Next slide, please, Dylan. So to kind of contextualize these capital costs, this eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar figure we got from our contractor. Uh, current capital and maintenance costs lumped together for city buildings are approximately seven dollars and ninety cents per square foot. Uh, looking at the estimate for Adams Tower capital maintenance costs, it's approximately fifteen dollars and forty-four cents per square foot. So we're looking at something that might be about double what we'd expect to pay on, on our current buildings. And a study from MIT showed that the average capex for structures is about three point five percent of the structure value. Applying that same methodology uh, to this building shows that the capex would be about seven point four percent. Uh, so looking at this a couple of different ways, we are looking at higher-than-average capital cost for this building. This is a forty-year-old structure, uh, so higher-than-average capex is somewhat expected. But just to kind of contextualize what that eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars for that ten years' worth of capital improvements would look like compared to other buildings. The city maintains or just other buildings in general, it's roughly double what we would expect. Next slide, please. Uh, back one, please. So other costs, uh, there is a typo on this slide. I am very sorry. It should be pretty obvious. Uh, condo assessment fee is eighty-five thousand dollar, eighty-five thousand two hundred dollars a year, not a month. Uh, seventy-one hundred dollars a month. Uh, I changed one and forgot to change the other. That covers common area maintenance as well as taxes and insurance uh, on the unit. So eighty-five thousand two hundred dollars a year, as well as operations and maintenance, uh, specific to our unit. Any maintenance that we would do, uh, basic facilities work for specifically our unit. We'd be looking about eighty thousand dollars a year. That's based on facilities estimate of about eight dollars a square foot, which is what they figure for most city buildings. Additionally, uh, if we were, since the space is bare right now, it's not furnished. If we were to look into a commercial remodel of the space, that'd be approximately one point two five to one point four million dollars. Again, prepared by our facilities team, based on estimate of about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty dollars per square foot. Uh, that does not include items included in the capital costs of that FCA we had prepared for the tenure items. That did include re-carpeting, new acoustic tiles for the ceiling, as well as drywall work. And so I backed those costs out of this estimate. Next slide, please. So looking at this kind of holistically, the, the cost over ten years, purchase price, one million dollars. The capital cost we discussed. The capital costs we discussed previously, $867,000. Over 10 years, the assessment fee would be $852,000, and we would spend about $800,000 on operations and maintenance. This is based on that annual number brought out to 10 years. The remodel would be an additional about $1.4 million. So grand total over 10 years for this building, we'd be looking at just under $5 million, all-in costs. Next slide, please. So that's kind of an overview of some of the questions that you had asked last time. I'm just trying to bring back a little bit more data for you. Also, now moving forward, next slide, please. So if we're talking about leasing this space out to nonprofits, which is from what I heard at the previous study session, what council is currently considering using the space for? These are, this isn't something staff requires direction on tonight. This would be something when we, you know, go through with this purchase and then are actually looking to let the space out, something we would decide then, but as a framework to kind of guide how you think about this space and its intended use, kind of a useful framework to facilitate that discussion among yourselves. So option A would be looking at this as a community investment. So leasing this space out for either no rent or a very nominal fee to nonprofits. And this is really envisioning it that the city will take on the $5 million cost in order to provide a benefit to the community. Option B would be kind of looking at this at the other end of the spectrum, viewing this building as a potential revenue stream for the city, that this space will eventually pay for itself and that we'll charge either near-market value for the rent or develop some sort of break-even or profit point and work backwards to assess rent from that. Then option C would be a hybrid model, somewhere between the two on that continuum. So that it should be a community benefit, but we could also price rent that is still below market value, but that recoup some of the cost, whether we decide, hey, we should price the rent to pay back the remodel or to cover the COA assessment fee or some other figure that we determine. Next slide, please. So getting a breakdown a little bit more of what these models would look like. So some pros and cons to the community investment. And the pros are obvious for this. It would give great real estate to nonprofits that could really use it. And it also shows that, you know, the city is really committed to providing for its community. The cons, obviously, not getting much of the money back. This would be a $5 million investment over 10 years, and that's a major expense. Next slide, please. Looking at from the opposite end of the spectrum, though, and there's a little bit more detail provided for each of these as well in the council communication that accompanies this presentation. So option B, we'd still be providing space to nonprofits, and it could turn the building into a potential revenue source, or at least not as much of a liability. The problem with that is, one, it'll be difficult to find renters at market or at near-market rates. A little bit of financial analysis I did on a breakdown. Average commercial office space is about $27 and change per square foot in the Denver metro area. A charging market rate for the space would see the building break even in its 26th year of operation. And that's assuming that there are no additional capital costs beyond 10 years. If we were looking at trying to have a break-even point at 10 years, we'd be charging $46 a square foot on a lease, which is near double market rate. So this is an option. It would be difficult to find renters, though, at rates that would make this building profitable. It's an option to have the building defray much of the cost for the initial investment over time. But it would be a very long-term view of this space. Next slide, please. Then option C is the hybrid model, pricing the potential lease to defray some of the costs, but not all. So it kind of combines some of the pros from both, but also the cons. So it could be more difficult to find renters even at a nominal or an intermediate lease rate. And it still would wind up being a major investment from the city, depending on how council wanted to view this. Next slide, please. And then also moving a little bit into the future of physical spaces. So currently, you know, during the pandemic, many organizations are shifting to telework and don't need offices. Personally, I have been working from home for now almost eight months, been into the office about two or three times in those eight months. And a result of that is currently there's a higher-than-average commercial vacancy throughout the whole metro area. Commercial office vacancy rates are up. People aren't filling those spaces as much as they used to. Unfortunately, there's no definitive answer on what the long-term future of physical spaces are. I included some references in the council communication, some studies, some research, some think pieces. It's unclear, you know, if, even if we do see a vaccine soon and things go back to normal, whether businesses will recognize, or organizations will recognize benefits in having people working from home and decide to keep people at home. Or if we will go back to in-person the exact same way, or if it'll be something between. But this is still something to consider when looking at a major investment like this. Next slide, please. So breaking down some of the pros and cons of this decision. I mean, having physical spaces builds teamwork and collaboration. Part of the reason why employees have been so effective in remote environments is because they have spent years, in some cases decades, working side-by-side with these people. And so all of these, these teams, this camaraderie, it's already deeply ingrained, and so it's able to survive a temporary transition to a remote environment. Also, physical spaces facilitate more engagement and a sense of identity and purpose in your work. It's easier to feel connected with what you're doing when you're physically present and actually able to show up, as opposed to just working from your office. And some downsides of physical spaces. I mean, it's a significant expense. This is a space where we'd be talking about $5 million over 10 years. It also constrains employees. Employees don't have the same flexibility that they have when they're working remotely. And it also limits your potential employee base. If you are hiring for a remote team, you have a much broader geographic scope that you can draw from. You can draw from a much deeper talent pool than you can if you're constrained to one particular area. Again, I don't have an answer, and from the research I did, no one does really have an answer about what we would say for the long-term view of this. In the short term, I would say it will be hard to fill this space if we take possession in December and are looking to let the space out. I would anticipate, and from what I've seen, the earliest we'd be talking about a return to normal would be maybe the end of next year. And so that could be potentially nearly a year that this space will be sitting vacant before we're able to find someone willing to move into the space. So I'd say the effects of this would be much more visible in the short term than they are in the long term. The long-term picture is much harder to see. That's part of the strategic vision that council would have, whether they envision moving towards a city that relies much more on telework and virtual spaces or that sees an investment and value in physical spaces. Next slide, please. So those are the consideration points and data that I brought back for you this evening. I'd welcome any feedback or questions that council has. Again, if council wishes to proceed with this purchase, no action is necessary tonight. If council wishes to not purchase the building, then we would require council action and direction this evening as well. So please hit me with questions.
Are there any questions from council or staff regarding this item? Councilmember Hearst.
You know, after my discussion, or my questions, I'd really love to hear the mayor's consideration on this, being that what his profession is, his experience. I know he didn't do the inspection, but just seeing what we got back, you know, what his recommendation would be from his professional opinion. Because I have to admit, I see the future for this area, and I really like the city to be involved in that corner, kind of, have services available there. But everything you just presented to me is a fiduciary responsibility of, doesn't sound like it makes any sense. And so, you know, I admit that I'm torn because I really want us to be in this location, in this general location, and this looks like the best opportunity, but I just don't see it as being the long-term benefits that we want to see. I think we'd see better organic growth in this area without us, you know, getting involved anyways. But what I also look back to is the nonprofits that were very excited about the opportunity of having something there. And so I'm torn. There's non-monetary value to having services there, for sure. No doubt in my mind that the, you know, $5 million has to be considered with the amount of kind of community value we'd be creating. So there's a large number to that as well. And so finding that balance, I think, is what we're all here to discuss, is how do we kind of manage through that, kind of being on the fence about, you know, seeing the value on both sides, so.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I, you know, have some concerns, like especially with option B. How can it pay for itself if we don't own the building? We would just be owning the floor. So how, how do you guys project that we'd be, you know, it'd pay for itself?
Eventually, if council were to view this as more of a real estate investment by leasing out that floor space, since you would be owners of that floor, you'd be able to lease out that floor space at, you know, a rate that someone would agree to. In theory, the building could pay for itself. My preliminary financial analysis of the space shows that that would be a very long-term investment, and that reaching that break-even point would, it would take about 26 years, assuming that after 10 years, we don't have additional capital costs that would push out that break-even point even further.
And I remember I previously asked them, if we went to nonprofits, we can't, we can't charge them, or can we charge them a small amount?
We could. It would be, that would be something that we would determine when actually engaging in negotiations for the lease. But the city would be able to charge them if they saw fit.
Okay, so since, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just curious, is it possible, since we're helping out nonprofits, would we qualify for grants to overcome the expenses?
That is a very good question. That's not something that I've considered. I can look into that, though, for you.
And then another concern, so staff would get to pick and choose who gets to go on the floor, right? Or would it be like a lottery pick? Because my concern is how could the mayor and city council know that the process was done fairly? Because eventually, you know, that's going to come back on the mayor and city council. So how, how would staff determine that, who gets to go on the floor?
You know, I'm not entirely certain how that process would work, how we would entertain potential lessees for that space. If anyone else on staff has any thoughts as to how that would work and wants to, perhaps their city attorney has thoughts on that and would wish to chime in?
Yes, I'd be happy to weigh in. I think Councilmember Ellen Thomas, that decision as to who could get it would be something that would come once the cities purchased the building. It's a down-the-road question, and council would certainly be able to create that plan. It wouldn't be a staff-selected thing. Council ultimately would have to approve a lease of city property to another entity, essentially. So council would have to weigh in on that. I also wanted to ask, further to your prior question about profit and possibly the business prospects. John, do you have insight into the limitations under the HOA, the condo agreement, rather, as to uses that we would be permitted? Is my understanding there may be some limits on commercial use of this property?
I am not aware of that. I will check back in the declarations and see what those limits are. My understanding at this time, though, is that council's vision for the space is that it be used for nonprofit entities.
Correct, yeah. And my recollection is there were concerns about it being used for law enforcement. But there are other broader uses possible, but you may have to get approval from the condo association to something that is not nonprofit or service-oriented.
Thank you. And then one last question, John. Did you say previously, so the city would be responsible for paying the HOA and the upkeep of the floor?
Yes, the condo assessment fee pays for common spaces, so lobby, elevators, any system that's shared within the building. It pays for maintenance on that, as well as taxes and insurance for the space. The operations and maintenance, that would be daily maintenance or for systems that only service the floor that we would own within the building.
And so just to clarify, like, say there was a major leak on the fifth floor, that's the city's expense then?
It would depend on where the leak originated from. If it was from pipes that only serviced that floor and that only affected that floor, then yes, it would be. Pipes, though, would be a shared system. And so that would more likely fall, it would depend based on how it's laid out. But any sort of shared system is the responsibility for the whole building, for the COA. Anything that solely affects that floor would be the city's responsibility.
Okay. And then one last question that comes to mind, too, is I remember at one point, you know, when the license plate used to be located in that building. So say we got a nonprofit organization for people with disabilities in the parking lot. Would they be possibly willing to negotiate certain designated parking spaces? Like, say we put a nonprofit organization for people with disabilities, would they, you know, have you asked, would they be willing to designate a certain parking areas for our floor?
We, the parking easement is part of this agreement. It was not designed with that potential in mind. So the spaces that the city or that the city would have for that floor are not the ones closest to the entrance. That is something that if council desired us to attempt to renegotiate, we could, I'm not certain that barring having concrete plans and an agreement, attentive, you know, verbal agreement or letter of interest from such an organization that would require such a demand, that that's something that we would be successful in negotiating?
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for the update. Really good information and certainly helped make my mind up. I don't think I would support moving forward with the purchase of this building. Seems to be a big investment where we have a lot of other places we could invest that money with more certain outcomes. And a 26-year return on the investment seems really unreasonable, given the age of the building already. So, you know, without a concrete plan for who would use it at this point, combined with the potential for more telecommuting, less commercial space needed, I won't be, my personal opinion is to not purchase the building.
Councilmember Noble.
I think Councilmember Madera was before me, Mayor.
Your name is above his name on my screen, so that's the order I'm going in.
I agree with you there. It is. And if someone can please tell the panelists from CDOT that his daughter may have visited, but my lights fell over, so it's just been that kind of a Zoom call sort of night. Anyway, thank you so much, John. That was really informative, and that was exactly the kind of information that I was hoping for. It's not the information I hoped it would be in terms of whether this makes sense as an investment for us. It was also interesting to me that it's a $5 million, which, you know, when we look at it, what else could we buy for $5 million? And could we buy vacant land and build something, for example, and do it for $5 million and not have a building that has such high maintenance? It is a great location. I love anything that's by light rail, and I think that the area has a great deal of potential that it will have at some point forward. And speaking of law enforcement, I had heard that the sheriff's department was offered this building, but wound up turning it down. So my concern is that the county actually didn't want to keep the building and didn't want to stay in this area, and no other facilities wanted to move into the building as well. But given the information that you have provided and the information that was given to us previously in terms of the inspection, I would have to say that it doesn't look like it's working for me now either. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera. Councilmember Madera.
I had some questions on uh some of the costs that were in that initial study. Were shared costs. Wouldn't those be covered under the um? The HOA or whatever we were calling it, the condo assessment fee?
So those costs laid out in the, in the reserve study and in the FCA, some of them would be, but that's more for. Operations and maintenance than it is for capital improvements to this, to the building.
Yeah, cause I mean, you know, the one that comes to mind is the AC and the HVAC system. So I think we had prorated uh a portion to the floor, but to me, that's something that. Is in common, is it not? Would that not be included in the assessment fee?
It would be included within the assessment fee to a point, um, that, that fee would not be sufficient to cover. Uh, the portion. I'm not entirely sure, and, and this is something I, I'll follow up with, with our outside counsel. Uh, how that breakdown would work. My understanding is that, that assessment fee is priced to cover. Daily maintenance, uh more operational maintenance than it is to cover capital investment in the building.
Yeah, cause I, I think that would be um, that, that was a pretty big ticket item that was driving most of this, this cost when we're looking at the. Ten-year projection. Um, you know, I guess my vision for this was. Kind of a hybrid type model, like not trying to recuperate everything, but. Um, try to minimize the operations and maintenance costs. And, you know, the city is really lacking services right now and, you know, this was a one way of trying to attract. Those services and not even just the services in itself, but you know, when you look at this part of the city and that building. The urban land is to um. They uh invested in that building and were trying to save it, and I think they're struggling too at the moment, so. This wouldn't just help. The nonprofits, but also some people that are investing in our community and trying to better our community. And I think that's something that we have to look at as a city is, we have to be a partner. Because we can't do this on this own, on, on our own and, you know, from what we're seeing is a lot of other people can't do this on their own, so. Instead of just looking at, you know, the, the dollar items, cause right now it's a difficult time, right? We're, we're talking a lot of money in a time of uncertainty and. You know, where it doesn't look like we're gonna be going back to the traditional office space anytime soon, so. It, it is scary, you know, I'm kind of torn between the two right now, but at the same time. If we were to do something like this, this is the time when. You know, we do have time to go in and uh fix some issues with the, the building and get things ready for when we do get back to normal. Um, for me, I think, you know, the, the remodel is something that. That would be something that we'd be working with the tenants, right, for leasehold improvements and those types of things. I don't think that would fall completely on the city because. If you remodel the whole space before you get any tenants, well, what if that's not suitable to the tenants that are coming in? So I think that's something that we would have to do um in, in partnership with. Whoever ends up taking the space, so. I don't know if. We would be uh on the hook for the whole remodel, but. You know, it, it definitely, it is a lot of money. I. I feel like um. We haven't reached out to the nonprofits, so I think part of the problem that we're seeing is that uh. That gap, right? We're, we're just looking at this as a building. We're not looking at it as the services that is provided, who. Could possibly be there, who's interested? Um, you know, we're strictly looking at this like if we're. You know, buying a home and moving in ourselves, which that isn't the, the case, right? So. I, I think that's the biggest struggle is um, you know, have we reached out to any of these nonprofits? Who has shown interest in this and um, you know, cause I've gotten emails myself, but, you know, from the city standpoint, um. What's your take on it?
Um, at, at this time, I am not aware that staff is actively reaching out to nonprofits uh in, in regards to the space. Um, I, I'm, I'm not aware of that. Uh, Mr. Tinklinberg, I, I see you have unmuted and turned your camera on and, and might have different information.
No, uh, I, I agree. There has been outreach uh that I'm aware of as well, so. Uh, that would be a next step if, if council, you know, wants to move forward. Uh, so, you know, in answer to. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas's questions as well, you know, we have not discussed any of that process or procedure. Pardon me. Uh, in terms of, you know, how a selection process would work or anything of that nature, you know, the first question is. Does council wanna purchase the building? So. I have opinions on that, but I don't know that this is the appropriate time, you know, it's really council's question at this point. Yeah, cause i- it seems like we had done so much work um a year or two ago. In terms of uh making those connections and networking with. The nonprofits that were interested in moving into the city and providing service and, you know, trying to remove some of those obstacles. And some of those barriers, but it kind of feels like we've completely dropped that by the wayside and now. You know, we're, we're just looking at the, the building itself and looking at the brick and mortar and not, you know. Any of what's gonna go inside of that.
Councilmember Grimes.
Apologies, just left my hand up.
Councilmember Ellen, uh, Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm a little torn, um. Because I, I get what council member Madera was saying, um, but I think also, you know. A lot of nonprofits are struggling themselves and for us to expect them to say, hey. We have this space, we need you to cooperate this, or even ask for a, a fee sometimes, they, they can't afford that. Um, I mean, there's some that can, so then we're really um looking to the ones that can. And we're leaving out a lot of small nonprofits, especially in Karma City that serve our communities. Um, so, I mean, I, i- it's hard, it's hard because this is needed in our city. Um, but I just don't think the. It's there right now. Um, I, it, it would be hard to support something like that because then, I mean, we're looking at the. Cost, it's eighty thousand a year, right? Um, so not only are we looking at the five million. But we're also having this agreement for future councils, future city staff of eighty thousand every year. Um, and working with a lot of nonprofits in my time, a lot of them won't be able to pay that rent. You know, to provide the services they do, that's how they keep their costs very low. Um, for grants, I, um, I know nonprofits could apply for grants. Um, but if money's tight, I mean, the grants go away. So for just the purchase. I, I just couldn't support it right now um to purchase it. I, I, I definitely wanna see more. I, I mean, we have everything here, I just, it, it's hard, it's hard because that's gonna be a prime location. That our city could really utilize uh in the future, especially with the RTD, the light rail. Um, whatever's gonna happen to ALSUP, I gotta call today about ALSUP, what's gonna happen with ALSUP. Um, in that space, right? And eventually, um, Adam City Middle School's gonna go up when they get another middle school, so that area. Um, if we could hold on to something like that, but for that price tag, I just, I, I just struggle. Um, with that price tag, to be honest with you. So I don't know, gotta think about it a little bit more.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, aggr- s- state that I think we should wait um right now, um, you know. Due to the situation we're in, and we can't really live in the theory of what possibly could happen, you know, cause. Um, Johnny expressed it could take maybe up to twenty-six years before we even see. Any type of profit, you know, for that expense and then to purchase a floor and then it's still just gonna sit because we don't even know. You know, when someone is gonna take, be able to even vacate the, the um floor, so. You know, right now I couldn't support the purchase of it either.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I just, coming back to, you know, I'm still, I'm still torn because. Um. We're supposed to spend tax revenue on supporting our community and make it, you know, make it a better place, and so I'm not, I'm not necessarily worried about recovering our costs completely. Um, in this situation, because that's kind of the going intent, right? Um, I, but, but on the other side of that, we have to operate and maintain our, our budget and. Um, to the extent of, you know, a people, um. So assets aren't only money in this situation. From the city's point of view, it's eighty thousand dollars a year plus. You know, a couple of employees that are spending, you know, a portion of their year on this, um, so on and so forth, but, you know. Councilmember Gordiola and I here, you know, through a cultural council, there needs to be more opportunity for local artists and small. Um. Nonprofits to operate. We heard some great, you know, opportunities with the. Um, dent, kids dentistry nonprofit and a couple of the others that, that just sound like, yeah, that's a great thing for us to support as a city and as a service to. Uh, to continue to build and provide or help build and provide in our city, so. You know, the fiduciary responsibility side, like, like uh councilmember Madera was saying, you know, we're not. This isn't our house, we're not buying this as, as our house, but I still feel a fiduciary responsibility. So that's why I'm on the fence. You know, I'm leaning towards saying no, but at the same time, you know, how can we carry this idea of? We um have identified a significant need and a significant will towards addressing those needs. And so what can we do? Um, I don't wanna sound, you know, horrible, but can we take the opportunity to, to. Um, look at other commercial space that has become open and, and maybe the market's a little bit softer. Um, to take a good position in a good um location for the same type of needs, right? Maybe it's not this location, even though I know this is uh priority future location, but we could find one potentially. And a, and another fairly good location for, that's kind of in the midpoint of our city, um, connecting area that provides good services, so. You know, that, that would kind of be like my compromise is if we say no to this, you know, maybe this council considers giving some direction to the city and, and. Uh, someone like John to um maybe find us two or three other options that do fit more of what we're looking for in our price range.
Thank you. Um, I see most everybody has raised their hand for a second and third round of speaking. Councilmember Smith, you haven't spoke yet.
John, um, have you or looked to see if there's other places available? Or are you just kind of focusing on this one spot right now?
I, for now, just focusing on this. I, I was assigned to this prod, to kind of shepherd this project through as opposed to. A larger role as facilitating space for nonprofits. Um, but that is something that we could, given council direction, begin looking into.
I just, I like this, this location. It's close to the light rail, like we have these services that are lacking in our city. And I think we need to get them going and, I don't know, I just. This area is gonna be up and coming pretty soon, and I think if we wait till later, that five million dollars is gonna seem like nothing. Like in ten years, it's gonna, or like in three years, or however long it's gonna be much more, so I think if we jump now. Like, I don't want Commerce City to get left behind again, so I think we should probably move forward with it.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Noble and Grimes, I see you wanna speak again. I'm gonna chime in first before you guys go. Um, you know, when we just started this process, I never imagined that this was going to be done for the purpose of making money. Um, the intention was always about having hu- human services component that can facilitate operating out of this facility. And um, you know, the, the costs that are associated with it, yeah, it's an older building, there's gonna be costs. Are they that extravagant? Probably not. Um, are they so extravagant that I wouldn't consider moving forward? Absolutely not. Um, this uh facility is in much better condition than the Hanan building that we did walk away from, but it's still uh, it's gonna have costs that are associated with it. You know, nonprofit organizations are a force multiplier. You know, we put a little bit of money into a nonprofit, mostly through the Quality Community Foundation. And they have significantly more employees and significantly greater reach than we could do individually as a city. So I have no problem with putting forth uh an investment to allow nonprofits who are struggling to get started, who are allowing nonprofits who are struggling. To be able to find that office space, to be able to work through that in order to get a facility that they can work out of. I have no problem in the city providing that, and I think that that's being um good government to allow nonprofit organizations like that to be able to. Flourish and to be able to get their feet started until they can get to the point. I know that uh. Kids, uh, need a dentistry as well as Kids First has a desire to move into that building as well. They would like to be in there and, and be close to everything that's going on. I know when you look at the ward spreadsheet that came out recently, you'll see that there is a desire for mixed use uh facility going in there with. Um, commercial and uh housing on top of it, multifamily tenant. Um, so there's a lot of opportunity there to grow into the community with that spot. You know, the, the commuter rail just opened up, we're hoping that we get some development out there with the commuter rail and the stationary master plant. It's just a great location to have the ability to use for nonprofits as well as. Maybe that's where our, our uh housing authority moves over to. Maybe that's where some of the more core functions that are related to personal services. Move over to and away from the civic center. So I, number one, I don't have an issue with the cost. Um, it's nothing that I didn't figure was gonna be out there. You know, you're looking at eight million dollars and thinking, oh, that's horrible, but that's spread over a ten-year investment. Um, is the cost gonna change over that ten years? Absolutely. Is more equipment gonna break over time? Absolutely. You know, we are not purchasing a building where we are in, in responsible for one hundred percent of the maintenance in the facility. We're purchasing a floor, all the other tenants or the, um, you'll see are gonna be responsible for kicking in the additional money on the. Uh, major capital expenditures, but really this is a good thing for the nonprofits and organization. And those nonprofits give back for every dollar we put in tenfold at least in order to make our community better. So let's step up and let's actually make sure that we can start attracting some of these nonprofits to organize, to our community that are gonna help our residents. That being said, councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I may be the only person on the panel who has been an executive director. And also was at a building where I was provided free space for my organization. So I am completely on board with um the idea of the collaborative environments. That uh nonprofit buildings can, can provide. Um, the recouping costs that John is talking about only matters if we're actually charging rent. And I would not see us charging rent at all, that would be for certain. Um, however, I still have uh misgivings about this building. I think that there are other areas that we could um move forward, uh such as. The Core City, for example, or Old Town. There may be places for sale. I know that there's people who live across the street from. The light rail area because of the industrial that's there, who uh wouldn't mind being bought out, for example. That is resi- zone residential, so that's a whole different issue. I'm not talking about, you know, condemning their homes or anything like that, but. There may be other areas that are near the light rail that would be available to us as, as well. I know this is difficult for the um, the nonprofit who bought the building, but they bought the building before um. Covid hit and we are actually in the position of looking at buying the building. While we're watching what's happening with Covid and to be in a five or six-story building. With sixty thousand square feet to fill of uh nonprofits or other. Businesses at this point in time, I think is just really very difficult. It's, it's an unfortunate circumstance for everyone, but. I, I do feel that we can find something else that we could do um. With our five million dollars.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I would much prefer to see us allocate that five million dollars to some sort of a program. Maybe even in, invest the five million dollars and make it available. Maybe even in, invest the five million dollars and make it available to nonprofits for assistance in finding their own homes. Um, assistance in getting into new buildings, places that make sense for each organization. I'm not averse to supporting the nonprofits in our community. I just think that we can do it in a better way. Um, and, and I would advocate for some sort of grant program to help them get started.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. I just think centralizing them was kind of the idea behind that, kind of putting them all together, um, for, for. You know, that collaboration opportunity. And again, you know, I think there's ideas, you know, we talked about, even if there was some type of funding, you know, one of the things that. Um, we've talked about in other arenas is like, does this, how much does this nonprofit give back? And we're not trying, you know, we're not trying to pick sides, but. You know, if we're talking about reduced or free, um, rent for these spaces, you know, I think it should come with some, you know, show us the percentage of. Uh, of people that you've impacted, you know, where they, where, that they live in Commerce City. We have to make sure that these would be non, nonprofits that are here in Commerce City. Working with Commerce City residents, um, before we, you know, hand out free rent. And so. I just, I think there's opportunities for us to discuss, you know, like, um. Programs in which this makes sense if we were to stay in this building. Again, you know. I, I, I guess I could go either way. I'm just advocating for, to similar with all of you, so it's just, there's a, a need to address, doesn't. I mean, there's not, um, on a blank check, but really the budget, um. If we're in this ballpark, makes sense to me to invest in our community based off of the need that we continue to hear.
Councilmember Gordiola.
Yeah, I had a question for staff. Um, Roger, have we looked at what it's gonna take for staff to maintain this for a year? Um, we know the rent and like what, what other, uh, costs and. Labor would be associated with that eighty thousand?
Well, as I recall from John's presentation, the condo fee is, uh, eighty-five thousand two hundred per year. Plus operation and maintenance is eighty thousand per year. So that's, you know, that's the cost. And John, I'm assuming that's built on our staff doing O and M in that floor alone.
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay. No, thank you. Uh, appreciate that. And also I think we also, when this came up. You know, the services that left that building were all county services, um, human services. Uh, you know, there wasn't nonprofits, I think maybe, or I don't even think there was nonprofits. So. Um, it was all county. So I'm kind of with, uh, Councilwoman Grimes and, you know, when we reached out to folks in our city. The, the number one thing was transportation to those county services. Because they took them to on a hundred and twentieth and Pecos. Um, and, uh, that's a huge, uh, barrier for a lot of our residents. Because they don't have, uh, cars or, you know, the light rail doesn't go up that far. Um, so. Uh, I think nonprofits are great, but I, I also think, you know, we have to, we're trying to, uh, fill void. Of that service or services, but they were all county services. Um, you know. Thinking of outside the box, I know we talked about like a transportation taxi service that took. Or even a, a, a bus service that took our residents that had those transportation barriers. To get to those services to a hundred and twentieth and Pecos, a spot in Commerce City to go. That's kind of where it started back. Couple of years ago about the void of those services. So with that, I think, again, I think. We, we could do a lot better getting a bus service from here to those services. Because that's the void that our, uh, uh, that our residents were asking that. They can't drive up to a hundred and twentieth. So I, I still find it hard. Um, and I do agree with you, Mayor. Um, everything you said, I think with our organizations, they give back. Um, we're never gonna recoup that cost because they're given, paid forward in a different way. Uh, but I think. If anything, we could think creative. Those services were specific to that building. Our residents went there for a reason. And now those reden- residents have to find a way to get to the other. Um, I would even ask if we have talked to. Collaborating with Adams County about this, right? Cause they, they, they moved them. Um, so. Um, definitely on the fence. I think either way it'd be good, but. Um, I'm still, uh, just, it's hard. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
If you started charging a dollar, you'd be rich.
We need to give staff directions, so we'll go one, or go, uh, two through, two through nine. And, um, need to say either you want to move forward or not move forward so that staff can bring this back to us. If we need to pull out of the purchase and sell agreement, uh, next council meeting. So please start, Mayor Protem.
Um, at this time, with our financial, I'm not in support of it.
I want to move forward with it.
Councilmember, Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I do not want to move forward.
Uh, regrettably, I would not move forward with it.
I will not move forward with it.
I say yes.
Uh, no.
Okay, that's enough people on the council that don't want to move forward with it. So staff, please do whatever you need to do for us to pull out of the purchase and sell agreement.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that may come back for a formal vote at the meeting next week, but I'll talk to John about what needs to be done.
Yep, that's what I anticipated, which is why I wanted to make sure you guys had clear direction. Next on the agenda is proposed litigation and settlement authority and contract authority ordinances. Will Mr. Sheasley, city attorney, please make the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. Um, it's late. You've had four presentations already. I do want to give. The council the option of postponing these matters that have been pushed off for about twelve months at least now. Um, if you don't want to continue tonight, these are, I think, fairly simple, but. Um, just want to check in and make sure everybody's okay with going.
Does anybody on council want to push this to a study session at a future date? Looks like we are all ears, Mr. Sheasley.
What excitement, then. We're gonna talk about nuts and bolts and procedures. One of my goals as city attorney has been to. Um, try and establish some processes, um, that the cities, uh, needs to grow into. And, and, and as we get bigger, some of the things. Um, that we do, I think, need to be formalized. And so that's why I'm bringing this forward of my, my own accord, and I'll try and make this. Quick and easy. The first half is this litigation and settlement authority concept. Um, over time, in my six years here, I've identified some lack of clarity when the city is in litigation or has an opportunity to obtain. A resolution of a potential claim, whether or not it has merit, um, for, uh, an amount that would save taxpayer money. Um, the actual concepts of approval of that and, uh. Who has, who gets to weigh in on litigation isn't entirely clear. And, um, I, I think it's important to formalize, uh, from an ad hoc. Uh, perspective, what we do. And this is my recommendation based off, um, this is based off ordinances that. Uh, Greeley and Boulder have. Um, I thought they did a pretty good job of laying it out. Of course, if council has a different view, I. Um, look forward to that and we can, we can gear up to do things differently. Um, so if I could get the next, um, slide, thanks. Um, so essentially we have charter provisions that say the city attorney prosecutes certain things and represents a litigation and can have special counsel. Um, but it's kind of unclear as to who can do what. Um, and as attorneys, we're bound first to our rules of professional responsibility. Promulgated by the Colorado Supreme Court. Um, it gets further confusing when you're in-house and you're representing a large governmental organization. Um, and it's also difficult for our outside counsel. Um, we come across this issue of, of who's the client. Um, oftentimes and responsibilities are a big thing. And so I think this would go a long way to helping us know, uh, who we need to inform. Right now, we provide monthly updates to council on litigation and go to you with specific issues. Um, but a lot of the times the nuts and bolts stay at a staff level. Um, clients, uh, must give approval on, um, settlements and are supposed to be the ones making decisions on the objectives. Of legal representation, not the lawyers themselves. Um, that's not my role to say which path the city should go down. Um, how we get there is the lawyer's decision under the rules of responsibility. Uh, and that gets confused when you're in-house. And so we're gonna try and frame that up a little bit here. Next slide, please. Um, so the, the proposed ordinance, um, is a few pages long. It's very dense, I know. But essentially it clarifies that in order to bring lawsuits, unless there's an exigent circumstance. Counsel needs to authorize us to proceed with that, rather than just have us wonder, are we gonna proceed with something? Um, but if we are in litigation and we need to raise a defense or, um, bring a claim against another party or bringing a third party. We could do that at a staff level to allow for some flexibility. Um, subject to budget, we clarify the authorization of, uh, retaining special counsel because we are not budgeted to do much litigation in-house. Currently, um, and then the intent of this ordinance is not to affect our prosecutorial obligations or seeking restitution in criminal cases. Or any of the administrative actions that we do, um, either with the, uh, state agencies or internally when we're doing administrative appeals. Um, next slide, please. I mentioned the client relationship earlier. The city of Commerce City is each of, is the client. Uh, for purposes of the city attorneys that work for you and our outside counsel. But we have to work through constituent agents. And so the draft ordinance designates the city manager just to confirm the ethical purpose for informing. Um, consenting to settlement, um, within certain limits, we'll talk about later, determining those objectives. Um, going to mediation or arbitration and, and other certain matters. However, it doesn't mean we don't keep counsel informed or counsel couldn't, uh, weigh in or give direction. Uh, we don't want to make that unlimited. We just think practically. Um, having counsel weigh in on every aspect of litigation would end up with an executive session at, at every council meeting. Which is something that, uh, we can do and counsel could weigh in much more on litigation. Next slide, please. Uh, so the real meat of this concept is to try and mirror the current procurement policy in fiscal expenditures. As far as who can approve, when the city pays to settle a claim. All of this is, of course, subject to appropriation. We don't have, to my knowledge, any sort of settlement fund and. Um, the city doesn't budget for these amounts. This is largely because we, um, are insured and we're not, we're not a self-insured in. Uh, so the concept that I've put forth is that council would have to approve any settlement over seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, that is actually less than the procurement policy. Um, it's a, which would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, that would also include any alleged wrongful acts by elected officials. So that city staff wouldn't be subject to having to make decisions to resolve those claims. Um, and then council would weigh in above that amount. If it's below that, uh, the city manager can approve a settlement. Our current practice is if it's within the procurement authority of the city manager, we don't seek, we, we notify council of an action, but don't typically bring it up. Um, for approval unless there's, uh, something to discuss or an act that council has to take. Uh, because we have a risk manager and there may be low-level issues like. I don't even want to suggest it, but, uh, minor fender bend or something like that, our insurance might take care of. We may resolve. We don't need to get to the city manager and get really detailed. Um, over it. Um, and so we want to be able to delegate that down. And we also want to take out any amounts paid by that insurance. Um, so if the city's contribution meets these amounts, um, excluding deductibles and what our third-party insurance may pay. This is what we'd be going, uh, to council for. Um, sometimes, uh, another entity or the council actually has to take an action. We may have a settlement where the city agrees to take some action. That's only within the council's authority. We'd want to make sure that that is, um, subject to your approval. Um, but it explicitly prohibits somebody else or any other type of resolution so that we don't have any, uh. I'll just call it a rogue staff member trying to resolve a claim without consulting the city attorney. Um, or without people that have authority, and that has happened in the past, and there are issues with that, whether it be admissions of liability. Um, or messing up a negotiation, um, otherwise. Um, it provides for city attorney review of releases and approval of form. Um, these are some things we've run into in the past. Uh, and that's, that's the meat of it. And I welcome any feedback now. Uh, this has been in the can for a little while and we're happy to go back to the drawing board. Um, or take any feedback.
Does anyone on council have any questions or feedback for Mr. Sheasley? Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks, Robert, for the presentation. I think this is a great idea and it's just one more checks and balance, um, on budgetary items and. Or financial items, I guess. And so I'd be, I mean, I don't know if you need direction, but I'd be supportive of, of this type of ordinance.
Thank you. Our plan would be to take it back for last check-in with staff and, and do a final run-through. Just. If anybody has significant concerns with this or, or items they want to change, otherwise we put it on in the next couple of months for formal review.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Robert, um, for tonight's presentation. And I would agree to support it, um, with Councilwoman, um, Grimes. So thank you.
Any other, Councilmember Noble?
Robert, could you explain the first bullet point again? Uh, and then the dash and.
On this slide about settlement compromise, about council approval. So if the ci- if, if the city is subject to litigation or there's a potential claim. And the settlement is, um, involves a direct contribution by the city of over seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, made in, uh, I believe, yeah, in payment there. Um, excluding any amounts paid by the insurer. So say the insurer is paying a billion dollars and the city's kicking in seventy-four thousand dollars. We wouldn't take this to council. That, that won't ever happen, by the way, so you know. That would then come to council for formal approval of that settlement. The, um. The, the sub-bullet about alleged wrongful acts by elected officials means that if the claim, um. That is being settled or compromised involves directly an alleged wrongful act by one of Commerce City's elected officials. That would come to council for approval. Council would have the authority to settle that.
That's what I wanted to do. I, I did not hear that and I just wanted to make sure that that was the case. Okay, thank you. I, I support it as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none to include no objections to it and look forward to this in the future, Mr. Sheasley.
Thanks. We'll be back, um, right after this slide for the next fun one, which is even less interesting. Um, which is contract authority ordinance. Can we get the next slide? We'll try and plow through this. Basically, um. Our code doesn't match our procurement policy and it leads to a lot of confusion, um, over some of our contracting requirements. And so we try to bring that up. Uh, to speed, uh, since procurement policy has been in effect since twenty fourteen. And, um, clarify more specifically when we have to go to council for approving certain items. Um, we know y'all want to see some things and don't need to see others and to allow for some flexibility. Um, we wanted to clarify some of these items. Next slide, please. Um, there's a lot of confusion in the city about property interest. You see all the time people, um, getting, uh, items on agendas for easements. Granting easements to different entities, um, and sometimes leases, uh, or licenses. There's sometimes confusion over who can execute those. Um, and so we clarify in this ordinance that council approval is required. This is consistent with the charter. Next slide, please. But the idea behind that, you can stay on this slide, but the, uh, the idea is the city manager could have, we confirmed that there would be authority at the staff level to grant some. Um, irrevocable licenses that may have a term that's longer than, uh. That that's fairly long, so we do want to allow some flexibility. Next slide, yeah, that's this one, sorry. Again. This one is kind of confusing. Right now, IGA has come to you if. They are outside of the city manager's authority where there's. Up to ten thousand dollars, he can execute an IGA that has no significant policy considerations or under a hundred thousand dollars. If they further a policy work plan item project or agreements specifically approved by council. It's not always clear for people where that is. And then there are questions as to whether there is a zero dollar IGA if the city manager has authority there. So we've proposed to clarify that city manager can execute in these terms. If there's no direct monetary payment from the city and no significant policy consideration. The city manager can execute an IGA. We've raised the limits on the other two items to be allow for some more flexibility. At twenty five thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, all of this is subject to appropriation, but we just felt that it would allow for flexibility in getting our programs up and running. Next slide, please. And then this is where we match the procurement policy where lower, right now, I won't get into the nuts and bolts of it, but. The contract authority to procure and select a vendor is different than the authority to sign a contract for that service or or good. And so we've just increased the levels here over who has the authority to sign a contract to match that. And we've clarified this includes contracts where we are accepting funds because sometimes there's confusion over authority there. And then we do have a requirement elsewhere to file contracts with the city clerk, and we we repeat that here. Again, council. Is council's approval is not mentioned here, but that is in the procurement policy at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for awards, but not for contracts. The city can, the city manager still signs those, but council has to approve. And then that is it. I told you it was less interesting. And welcome any feedback there.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Sheasley on the last presentation?
I can't imagine.
Seeing none, looks like everybody is good with what you proposed.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Last item on our agenda is reports. Are there any council members have a report to make? Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. I have been in conversation with businesses in in Ward Four, and something has come to my attention. The discussion that we had earlier about ambassadors regarding COVID. Is sort of similar to what they're looking for. And that would be having an ambassador, if you will, or a. A navigator within City Hall to help the businesses. Do several things. One is comply with TCHD. At the same time, they're complying with our zoning, at the same time that they're complying with our rules. Same time they're complying with the fees and potentially applying for grants or any anything else that might come up over time. And the reason that this was suggested is that. Even the more sophisticated businesses find themselves bouncing around and not knowing who they should speak to. In order to get an answer to a question. So, for example, you want to put something outside your business in order to give yourself more square footage. Do you have to go to the fire department to get approval? Do you have to go to the. Community development department to get approval? Are there departments within community development to give approval? What about if you put a tent up in a parking lot? Does that affect the minimum required parking spaces that you must have for your businesses? It's all very complicated, and it brings to mind also that we've talked a lot about economic development. When, at the same time, what we also need to really be focusing on is economic retention. And that's to ensure that our businesses are successful here in Commerce City during this period. And it's not just giving them money or giving them grants because some of them will get that. But they're trying to find a way to be sustainable and keep themselves on their feet. Because any grant that we give won't get most of these businesses beyond a month or two anyway, so. Is there any, is there any interest among council members in. Having something like this for Commerce City so that we can provide a service to our residents? And then, or perhaps my first question should be to Roger, do we have something like that? Here in Commerce City that can help the businesses who are trying to find their way through these very, very challenging times?
So. Most of the people that come into the Civic Center will stop at the city clerk's office to, you know, ask some of the questions. The community development department has a planner of the day who is available to answer questions. So we sort of have some of it, but we certainly could explore, you know, can we do that better? You know, to to your point of of being able to guide people through the process. So certainly something that. At a minimum, we'll kick around, you know, at the staff level and and try to figure out if there's a way to do it with our existing resources. You know, without incurring additional cost, but but again, you know, we'll have to kick that around.
That would be great because some of these, you know, even if you just have one person that you can come back to with questions. That has a better understanding of of all the complexity because all of you are in meetings all the time. So you have a much better picture of the big picture than any of these businesses do. So that would be wonderful if you would explore that. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hurst.
I was just going to add to that, you know, with that being said, it might be good if we use these what we approved earlier to. If we had like one general email inbox that we can put out on social media. You know, if you have COVID questions, send them to this general inbox, and then you can have multiple of those people. That we approved earlier, the variable hour employees. You know, responding to those, but if they don't know the answer immediately, they can reach out, find the answer, kind of do the homework and then respond back. I think that might be a good tool for our business, our business owners in the community as well, so I support that idea.
Any other council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Hurst.
Ian Masala, project.
Seeing none, I do not have a report to give this evening, so that being said, we are adjourned to see you all next week. Have a good night, have a good week.